Good evening, everybody. I am calling to order this meeting of the Greenfield City Council. It is 6:31 PM. So, thank you all for being here. Our first order of business before I do anything is to mention that this meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-9. If any other person present or doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Got you. Okay, Greenfield Recorder. All right, so now we're going to take a roll call of the members. Do we need... Never mind. I was trying to figure out who was virtual and who was not, but...
We don't think there's anyone currently virtual, currently online. So, but we'll find out in a minute. Counselor Golub?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Healy informed us earlier that he is more than likely going to be absent. Counselor Brown?
Here.
Vice President Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas, we have not heard from. We will let you know if he comes online. Counselor Toronto?
I'm here.
President Wandelowski?
Yes, here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you all. Our first order is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is voluntary. All right, for those of you who have come for public comment, I just want to mention that there's a sign-in sheet over here. So, if you want to speak, just sign in. You'll have three minutes. And our first order of business is a message from the superintendent.
I think I'm gonna kick us off. I'm Glenn Johnson Musad. I'm the Chair of the Greenfield School Committee. Just wanted to give an update on our redistricting. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. As you may know, the school committee has been deeply engaged in evaluating the significant impact of the mayor's proposed reductions to the school budget. We have taken these challenges seriously and acted quickly to respond in a way that is both student-centered and fiscally responsible. At our meeting last week, we acknowledged that we are at a crossroads. Our prior redistricting plans now intersect with new financial realities and updated enrollment data. We've always approached these decisions with the best interest of our students, families, and taxpayers in mind, and that guiding principle continues to shape our path forward. In light of all that has changed in recent weeks, we took two immediate steps. We identified a path forward for the 2025-2026 school year that minimizes disruption to students and staff while preserving core services and supports. We will continue with our geographic redistricting for elementary schools, but pause the reassignment of 8th grade to the middle school and the 5th grade to the elementary schools. And then, we will reconvene the Redistricting and Reorganizing Ad Hoc Committee for FY26. And this committee will take a fresh look at our long-term configuration in light of new data. It will explore how declining enrollment, both locally and across the state, affects our future planning, and how we can adapt in ways that preserve equity, efficiency, and educational quality, including the possibility of closing a school. The committee will include members of the school committee as well as Mayor Disorga, and we'll work closely with the superintendent to identify the most sustainable model for our schools. We're committed to being transparent and collaborative in this process. We recognize the complexity of the challenges before us and are ready to work together with City Council and the broader community to meet this moment with clarity, compassion, and resolve. Thank you for your time and continued partnership, Superintendent.
Thanks, Glenn. Just to piggyback that, I just wanted to remind families that the 9 Streets that are affected in that geographic reassignment are located on our website under the redistricting, but also in my weekly parent update. I have fielded a lot of emails and inquiries from kindergarten parents about those. And you can always call Central Office. And that just piggybacks to the second topic tonight, which is kindergarten registration. We've been doing... Each Thursday this month, a different elementary school has done kindergarten registration. Tomorrow night's is Discovery School at Four Corners from 4:30 to 6:00. But kindergarten registration, along with any registration for next year, can be done at Central Office or the school that which you are assigned. And just a reminder that Central Office is closed on Monday due to the Patriots' Day holiday, but we will be open the rest of the school break week. Thank you.
Great, thank you both, and thank you so much for the update. I really appreciate that. Questions from counselors? Counselor Toronto?
I had one, and I apologize. I meant to ask this last night at Ways and Means, and with having people go back and forth and ask questions, I totally phased out on this one. So, I remember... I know we're at this point. We're not doing this redistricting this year, and that's fine. But as a financial question, I've heard the number tossed around that it was gonna be about 1.8 million to do that, redistricting? And so, just, I don't know, as a point of inquiry, why would it cost that much to move a couple of teachers from one building to another where we already have classrooms? Like, I know that the elementary schools have enough classrooms to house this, right? Like, I mean, that was part of the whole plan, and that was part of what was looked into. So, I mean, we're talking about... I mean, most schools, right? The teachers leave at the end of the year. I don't... I don't want to make it sound like that, but like, you never know when the pink slips are gonna be until it's like July. But, so they're essentially clearing out their classrooms the end of the year, to the most part, and then repopulating their classrooms, you know, a couple of weeks before the school year starts. So, if they were just moving over, and so we're talking about possibly moving some desks and some furniture and things like that, like, I'm trying to figure out where the... And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've heard that number over and over again, is 1.8 million was going to be the cost to make this move? And so, it's hard to figure out where that cost would come into when it's literally just a couple of people are moving and then some, maybe, I don't know, central maintenance or, I don't know how you guys move around desks and chairs and all that stuff. But where that cost would come into? So, what would that look like?
I have no idea where that 1.8 million came from. So, it's the $1.889 million cut to our budget, which maybe is what people keep repeating, but not directly tied to redistricting. The redistricting was the additional four teachers at the middle school for the Science and Social Studies for them to be extended years, and then additional costs with impact bargaining with custodial bargaining units if they... We had to impact bargain the help to move and teacher time. So, I'm not sure where that $1.8 million cost associated with option 2B came from, but...
So, with those... So, those costs are still gonna be there, is what I mean, like, to extend those to full-year programs, what you're talking about? They're still gonna be there anyway, regardless of whether we shift folks from the 5th graders and the 8th graders down? Are they're still gonna be there, or why would they only be there because of redistricting?
No, because we are... We're keeping the same schedule at the middle school that is current, which is half-year Science and Social Studies.
Gotcha.
So, the pause put a hold on that.
Okay. So, things are tied together even though they're not being seen as two separate things? They've all been grouped... That's what I mean. And sometimes, it's just the way the...
Well, and I...
The narrative comes out is that if we were to redistrict, in the sense of moving 5th and 8th graders, you're saying we would then also, at the same time, be adding these other half-year to full-year positions, but because we're not gonna move them, we're gonna keep them at half-year? Like, those seem like two separate things that are now being kind of combined together. So, that's where... When it comes into that, I think that's probably where some of that narrative comes from.
And it's much more complicated than that. I think everyone wants it to be an A-plus-B in that it makes it clean and easy. But scheduling for middle and high school is not that clean and easy. And the piece that people forget is that secondary teachers at the high school are content-specific licensed. So, at the middle school, you would have needed two 8th grade teams, but at the high school, you have a team of... One 8th grade team of four, but you also have high school teachers who are certified in that content that can take on additional sections.
I guess.
So, it's really a complicated process that I think people really want it to be cleaner than it actually is. And moving all of those pieces always affects another piece that affects another piece down the road. And that's what we've been working on in the last few days to try to really get a handle on. How many sections do we need for the students that are now gonna be housed in the buildings that they're remaining in? Because that wasn't what we were planning in the scheduling process earlier this year.
Okay. No, that's helpful information to explain that that... Those multiple layers end up coming into play. I don't think that that might have been spelled out earlier, so I think it's helpful that you put that up there.
I think that in the superintendent's presentation from the budget hearing, there was request for us to provide a level services budget number that's in there, as well as the number for the plan to have the redistricting. So, if you're looking for a cost comparison of those, that's a place to look, I think.
I know, did we ask for that? And as of last night, we asked for you to come back on the 3rd, sorry.
Excuse me, Counselor Toronto. I just want to give enough room for other folks to ask questions, so... And we can come back to you if there's... Counselor Garrett?
Just regarding the level services budget, the number I think I saw in that presentation that you shared with us is around $600,000. Is that correct? No?
I didn't bring that slide, but it is a $600,000 difference, so, between the two. But I think the 5.42% level service was still a one some... I don't have it on me, John. Yeah.
1.2, okay. So, closer to 1.2 million?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see Counselor Golub.
Oh, you're good. So, first, I want to say I really appreciate the work that you all have done to take the mayor's proposal to close a school seriously, and I really appreciate the school committee voting to reconsider, even despite all the work that's been done, which I know that you all have done a lot of work on that. But given the current circumstances, I really appreciate you all thinking through how to make changes right now. And I am working very hard to figure out how we are going to figure out how to fund the schools well this year. And so, I've been working hard to get clear on the financial circumstances, and I... And so, I feel reluctant to say I was pretty frustrated by some of the responses last night, and that I wanted more clarity. And about... There were questions about what are the plans with the reserves? And I heard we might take 500,000, but we're not gonna use all of it, and there's a big difference between 0 and 4.5. Also, with the questions about reclassification of funds, I heard the word "we are allowed to do this" several times, but it is important... I think that the requests that I'm hearing from counselors is to see the schools as part of the whole, of the cities, of the city. And I... And we still don't have crystal clarity about what the number for our level services budget is. And I think that in order for us to have... I don't know what votes we can have on... What will be within our power to vote for? I don't know that yet. But in order for, I think there to be trust from the council to make whatever move is possible to fund the schools, we need more transparency. We... I... And I think that you know, Glenn, I think Glenn, you know, I think both of you know, and my colleagues will attest to the fact that maybe there's someone who will fight as hard for me for schools on this council, but everyone here will agree that I will fight as hard as I possibly can, which is part of me saying we need more clarity. And so, we need those numbers. I would love to see a special meeting of the school committee to be answering these questions and offering transparency and clarity, and I know that's your choice, Glenn, as a chairperson. I would ask you to do that, because I do not know how we move past this point unless there is really, really clear sharing of information. And I know that when there's confusion between parties, it's... The first place to look is what information is not being completely clearly shared. And I'm saying that on both, on all sides. And also, the complexity of school funding is a lot. So, I'm not... I am trying to demonstrate how much I'm on your side, and I was frustrated by the answers and wanting more clarity and hoping that you will meet so that we can all hear clear answers to those questions. It's a statement question.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a question I can answer. I did explain last night, you know, the plan since July 1 has been to operate under X. 5th grade was moving, 8th grade was moving, we did all the scheduling, you know who... What teachers you need to cover preps? You know what you need for electives and all of that. So, in four days since the shift, that's all I have spent doing. And so, to have all of that clear for last night's Ways and Means was impossible, and I understand the frustration. But I can't work harder to try to now undo what I've been working for seven months, planning for September, to now try to do in less than a week and give clarity on what every answer everyone wants when I haven't yet actually figured out how many... How many teachers do I need in specials to cover those preps? For how many teachers are gonna be at these schools now? So, we finished the middle school today. I worked all day Monday at the high school, and we're onto elementarys tomorrow. So, there are only so many hours in the day, and I am trying to get all of the chess pieces on the board so that we know exactly what we need, along with considering a lot of issues such as people who have retired, and can we survive without that position being refilled? Or was there a resignation mid-year and then we haven't filled it? So, do we need to actually fill that? We're trying to be as fiscally responsible and really address the needs and understand the constraints. But at the same time, I'm not going to obliterate a school system in the programming and the supports and the needs of our students. So, I'm trying to be thoughtful about that, but I can't do it in less than 72 hours. So, certainly, we will... We talked today about a potential special meeting, and, you know, school break is next week. I will be working, but it'll be quiet, so there will be a lot of work that can get done. But we're trying.
I would just add that, you know, I've been on the school committee for almost six years, and the... I feel like some of the concerns about lack of transparency, or sometimes it sounds like people feel like there's some kind of shell game going on, actually has to do with the complexity of the system. And I don't know why there's been a practice in Greenfield for, you know, a long time of having a reserve fund where all of the charges to it for a fiscal year get billed one place, and then they get reclassified at the end of the fiscal year. And so, you can't just look at that reserve fund number and go, "Well, they have all these reserves, and why aren't they using them?" I don't know where that... How that practice developed. I don't know how difficult it would be to change, but I will say that I do believe that some of the questions that people come to us with some degree sometimes of suspicion and concern actually have to do with the complexity of the system. And some of those, you know, revolving funds have their own rules about what they can be spent on and how they get accounted for. So, you know, to whatever extent we can help to make all of that clear to people, I'm committed to that and that, continue to learn myself about some of these items, so...
Counselor Golub?
Yeah. I don't know that... And I don't know that I'm someone who falls into the category of thinking that there's a shell game. I came with expectation of... Or the hope of clear answers, and it makes complete... What you're saying, Superintendent, makes complete sense to me, that figuring out the level services budget requires work, and I heard you commit last night to bringing us that number. And the answers around the reserves are not... Were not clear. The answers around reclassification were not clear. I am talking about the current responses that we received last night. I know that school funding is incredibly complex, and I know that these practices precede you. However, I do believe that it behooves you and it behooves all of us to be having really clear answers now. And so, I'm hoping that you will have a special meeting so that those answers... The current questions can be answered. Like, we're... Yeah. I would be grateful for that. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions. So, thank you both. I know last night was a long night as well, and I look forward to the special meeting. I think being able to come together is really important. Next on our agenda is communications from the mayor.
Good evening, counselors. Brief report getting in the spring cleanup spirit. I'm excited to share that I'll be organizing and taking part in a downtown cleanup on Friday, April 25th, from 12 to 3:00. You're all invited. The cleanup will cover Main Street, Federal Street, and some parts of Bank Row and Hope Street. Many departments will be participating. No sign-up or registration is necessary. Just come to the Common with some gloves. I'm very grateful for all the great businesses and organizations in the downtown. I think it's a great way for our community to show them some support and promote maintaining a clean downtown. Also, on Tuesday, April 29th, the city is participating in partnership with the Greenfield Business Association and the Franklin County Chamber of Commerce, hosting a business listening session at the Johns-on at 5:30. I encourage any business owner who's listening or watching to attend and make their voice heard. We did this last year, and it was very successful. On your agenda is... I urge you to pass the transfer of $354,000 from free cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation. The settlement is in a response to a U.S. Supreme Court case. As you may recall, we sold the property in excess of the outstanding debt owed by the plaintiffs. The settlement represents much less than the city could be paying should this case continue in federal court. Keep in mind that it is not covered by city insurance. We do not anticipate any other cases such as this for two reasons. The state of Massachusetts has since passed a statute of limitations on this. Additionally, the city has not sold any other properties since the U.S. Supreme Court ruled on this. Also, there's been widespread support in the city for making right by the plaintiffs. I'd like to extend an invitation to you for our upcoming flag raising. Greenfield will be recognizing the National Child Abuse Prevention Month with a flag raising that will be happening on the Common on Friday, April 18th at 11:00. The ceremony will include remarks from local leaders and also a musical performance from J'adouk. I was there last year, and that was phenomenal. And lastly, our recreation department continues to work nonstop to fundraise for this year's fireworks. The rec department will be hosting their annual cornhole tournament on Saturday, May 3rd at 3:00 PM. Similar to last year, I'm proposing a friendly challenge to all of our city counselors. The mayor's office may not have been victorious last year. I actually remember those of you who did very well. And... But we will be back again this year, challenging you again, and I'm just very grateful to Kristy Moore for the continued... For continuing to organize these great events. So, any questions that you have, I'm happy to take.
Counselors, are we doing cornhole? All right. No, this is unofficial. We will not have a quorum.
I'm really bad at cornholes, so you guys are welcome to leave.
I'd like to say that President Wandelowski was wonderful. You were great. I remember that. It was a good event.
Counselor Garrett?
So, speaking of games, there's been a discussion between Counselor Wandelowski and myself about the idea of doing something similar to the cornhole tournament, but with the new bocce courts. So, that's just something, you know, this is... It's in the public, so it's real now. But at some point, that would be a fun thing to do as well. So, just keep it in mind.
Sounds great.
I'm really good at bocce, by the way.
Great.
Very good.
Hello. My question is, as I'm thinking about the school budget and how... What to do, how we're funding the schools, and all the different options, it's come to my... Or actually, two years ago, when we were working on it, it was mentioned to us that in previous years, there had been a practice of using free cash from the next year's budget, a promise of free cash to pay for the upcoming year's budget. And I'm wondering if you would be open to considering that or open to a conversation about that as one possible... One possibility?
First, if I remember correctly, it was probably about using the free cash that we had, but perhaps we were talking about next year's?
Future years, yeah.
So, I wouldn't be in favor of doing that for a couple of reasons. One, we don't know what we're going to have in next year's new free cash, although I'm sure there will be some. But secondly, I think I made that clear, or I will be making it clear. I think that this is very doable for money that is in reserves. The revolving accounts, three years ago, had a balance of 2.5 million, and right now, the balance is 5.2 million. The, you know, transportation revolving a couple of years ago had 0 or 100,000, and it's now got a million. We haven't been using 1504 or 1521 school choice or special ed revolving. It's increased dramatically, and I think that's doable in addition to not hiring the folks that were planned as part of the move.
Counselor Toronto, and then Counselor Bullock?
I just want to point out, it's actually... There's no way that we can... It's illegal to pre-budget something that you can't fund because you don't know what the funding is gonna be. So, there is... I think you might have misheard something, Counselor Golub. We cannot pre-budget free cash because it's not... Until it's certified, we can't promise to spend anything. That's entering into a contract that is unfunded, and that is completely illegal under state law. So, that would never happen anyway, and we wouldn't legally be able to... Even if we got a financial order from the mayor on it, we couldn't legally vote on it, because that's money that you don't know is there. And that's one of the fundamental rules of contract law with the state, is you can't enter into a contract if you know... Knowingly do not have the money to do it. to do it. So, that's all I want to say about that.
I have Counselor Bullock.
Yeah, I guess my question is, well, first I'll make a statement. One is that, you know, two years ago, I think we all, we knew this was going to happen. This was, this was forecast to happen with the school budget. We were, many of us who are here on the floor today, yourself included, were lucky enough to be able to swoop in and address a deficit in the budget in the moment, largely because there was separate federal funding sources that had come through the city at the time due to COVID. I think what I'm looking for, and, and really, more than anything, I'm speaking as a, as a parent of a child in the school district at the moment, is for everybody to take some accountability in this process and look forward, because we are going to be in this exact same position next May and the May after with our education budget. We have to come up with a systemic way to create a sustainable budget that's going to work for our kids, and I think that means level service funding the budget with the contractual obligations. Like, for four years, I've heard that, right? We, we've entered into contract negotiations. We have to meet that. And, you know, I think that there's, what I've tried to understand, and I, and I want to say, like, I've met directly with the superintendent and the business manager twice now, and there's two different ways that this is being viewed, this issue is being viewed. There's a real difference of frameworks that have to do with revolving accounts and how much you hold in a revolving account. And we can talk about that on the floor when we discuss our budget, and what is the right way to do it and what isn't. And what I heard you ask, Catherine, was not like, will we get a financial order ahead of a deficit? But what I heard you ask was like, if those revolving counts get drained, and we have two special ed students that enter the school district, and that brings us out of compliance with being able to meet the needs of our students, is there going to be free cash available to fund those students' education because we've drained the appropriate revolving accounts that we can utilize for embedded education or whatever it may be? Because my understanding, and I don't know if I agree with the amounts that are held in those accounts, right? Like, I think we're in a crisis right now, so we need to dip into the savings account to utilize it. So, really, what I'm asking, I guess, as a parent more than anything, is a process for us to come together, once we get through this budget season, which is going to be a Band-Aid, to really look at a larger picture of sustainability for the school system over the next five years. Because I think whether you leave office, Ginny, or run again, you're, the, the person after you is, is going to run into this, this problem, and we need someone in leadership right now through the superintendent's office and through the mayor's office, and through the council that's going to sit down and create a sustainable plan for the long run. Because many of us have kids that are here for the long run, you know? My kid has another seven years, eight years, in the school district.
So, I agree with you that we have to make a plan, not just for this, but for every department. We're facing, in fiscal year '27, we are going to face unique challenges, and I think, you know, I am thinking about that, especially with each new person that we're putting into a position. And as somebody comes forward, and there's a resignation, I think about it. So, yes, we have to make a plan for not just school department, but for every department that is part of our city, because we're, we're all part of the whole. So, yeah, I agree with you.
Did I have Counselor Perry? No, I thought, I thought your hand came forward. Does, did anybody need to ask a question first, and then I'll come back to Counselor Gullum? The phantom hand over there. Okay, Counselor Gullum.
Counselor Bullock spoke my mind. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, did I hear that there will be blue bags available with that?
Oh, yes, we'll have blue ba, blue bags will be available, and you can bring your own gloves. And actually, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. We have business owners that are going to come, the sheriff's office, I don't know if people are going to come to the school, but I have high hopes for those three hours, let me tell you. Cleanup. I'm on cleanup. That was blue bags, right?
Blue bags, yeah. So, if, if I wanted to walk around my neighborhood and clean up, I could get a blue bag.
Oh, I have some in my trunk. I'll, I'll bring them during the break. I happen to have them from when I was helping at Energy Park, you know, during COVID. So, there's still some there, and, yeah, I'll give you a few. Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a pit stop during the break.
Thank you, Mayor. So, next on our agenda, I'm bringing up City Attorney Gordon Quinn of Sullivan Hayes and Quinn in filing a response to the open meeting law complaint filed.
Your mic. Good evening. Okay, great. So, just to recap, I'm going to give you a little bit of the background. So, this, this open meeting law complaint, which was submitted to the council back on March 24th, relates to a March 19th meeting of the council. And basically, what the complaint is alleging is that there was a violation of the open meeting law with respect to the posting of an amended agenda to that meeting. And just a little bit, to provide some further background, so there was an agenda posted, and then on the morning of the meeting on March 19th, the agenda was amended to include two items. And these items had to do with questions that were going to be posed, separate sets of questions that were going to be posed to the superintendent and the mayor relating to school district accounts, operations, and financial issues. And so, the, the, the complaint, that was, the open meeting law complaint, was that those, those amendments shouldn't have been added because they were not posted more than 48 hours in advance of that March 19th meeting. So, I've taken a look at the amended agenda for that March 19th meeting, as well as the circumstances that led to the amendment of that agenda. And just by way of background, so what, what had occurred here, my understanding and looking at all the evidence, was that on the evening of March 18th, Counselor Gullum had prepared lists of questions that she wanted the superintendent and the mayor to ask, and she ended up emailing those questions to the city, other councilors, as well as the city clerk, as well as President Wondolowski. And she wanted to, the mayor and the superintendent to address those questions the next day. And that email was sent after 8:00 P.M. on March 18th. So, clearly, you know, the, the, these amendments, these topics were added to the agenda. Now, the law is, is that typically, generally speaking, a, an agenda for a meeting of a public body in Massachusetts, listing items, has to be posted more than, at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Now, within 48 hours, the agenda can be amended, provided that the topics that are being added to, to the agenda were not reasonably anticipated by the chair of the public body, which is President Wondolowski. Okay? So, the issue in this case was, is, in this matter, in terms of resolving this complaint, is, were those questions that Counselor Gullum had submitted on the evening of March 18th reasonably anticipated by President Wondolowski? And my understanding is, I don't know if there's any evidence that President Wondolowski was aware those questions were going to be asked of Counselor Gullum. And in looking at the statute, the open meeting law statute, as well as other open meeting law determinations issued by the Attorney General, my conclusion is, based on those facts, is that there was no violation of the open meeting law by adding those items. They could be added, and they could be addressed. Now, the Attorney General's office has said that, notwithstanding that, they strongly encourage public bodies to postpone a discussion, if you can, on items added to an agenda within 48 hours. But you're not prohibited from discussing them. And they also, the Attorney General has also asked that, you know, no action should be taken on some of those items as well, if, if they, if they can be avoided. But these are just encouragements from the Attorney General's office. So, again, based on the information, I believe that there was no, I advise in council, I believe there was no violation, specific violation of the open meeting law by including those items on the agenda for the, for the March 19th meeting. So, I, I know that the earliest that President Wondolowski could have viewed those questions was the evening of March 18th. I'm not sure if that's the case, or if you saw them the next morning. As the city clerk, I have spoken to the city clerk, and she first viewed them the next morning. But that's the standard. And so, my advice would be that on behalf of the council, because now I have to prepare a response, that I would outline that, those facts, that legal argument, and submit a response to the complaining party. I think we have until Friday to do so. And then I would submit that, and then the complaining party would decide whether to appeal that to the attorney, you know, further to, to the Attorney General's office. So, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions about that, about the facts, about the, my advice or the process.
Counselor Toronto.
I do. And I know we already, I believe, obtained, the legal opinion we got was from your office. In regards to some of these weird changes that have happened in the last two years, and I've been here for four, and it's been brought up multiple times. So, we have, we have things like further down our, our agenda that have to do with, like, old business, unfinished business. And it has been at times that we've been told, and even new business, that if it's not, I keep using that word, of course, the reasonably anticipated, we keep seeing this, we didn't used to have this on agendas, and it kind of came out of nowhere. And I think that there's been a lot of confusion with that. If I get a communication from, say, the mayor was just here and giving us communications, and she listed what she was going to talk about tonight, when I hear that communication, I can't reasonably anticipate, because I didn't know what she was going to say, right? I can, I can hear, I can list, she can list downtown cleanup. And maybe something that she says at the time spurs a thought that I want to ask a question about. And there have been times where I feel like, in some of these categories, it's been, I don't want to say stifled, but the idea is that, like, we're, we're no longer allowed to talk about something that wasn't already posted on the paper. And I believe the opinion, the legal opinion we got from, from your folks before was saying, everything we were doing before we reprinted it this way was totally fine. We're allowed to have old business. We're allowed to ask questions of the people who come to us that evening. Obviously, i- in good faith, I think we all should try to reasonably anticipate, and if we can, submit our questions in advance, so people have time. And, and I think a reasonable response would be, if, 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 you know, the superintendent of schools comes up, or the mayor comes up, and somebody has a question that's going to require digging into some details, we shouldn't reasonably expect them to answer it that evening, but a reasonable response would be, I will get that information for you, and maybe I can bring it up to you next month at our communications. I just, I want to, I want to make it clear so that we're all on the same page, that we can still have wildcard stuff that comes up. There might be things that come up 3:00 P.M. the day of the meeting, and like, you have an epiphany, you're like, man, I didn't, I, I want to ask that question now. And to not have to be feeling like you're not able to ask that question because you didn't have 48 hours advanced notice to ask the question or put it on the agenda, is that, is that an okay process for us to just go through, being humans, and, and ask what comes up in conversation or in communications? And if we end up throughout the agenda, we get to, we don't have anything listed tonight under old business, but if a conversation we come up with during one of our other things tonight, when the old business portion comes up, and we say, oh, by the way, I'm remembering this thing from like, two months ago, I want to bring it back up, but it wasn't on the agenda, should we not still be able to bring it up under the open meeting law?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can, you can certainly bring it up. I mean, there was one case I read in the Attorney General determination where there was a select board, and a select board member brought up an issue just like that, that was prompted by some discussion. And the chair, the determination was that the chair didn't reasonably anticipate that that item would be brought up. So, discussing it, there was no violation of the open meeting law, even though it wasn't posted on the agenda, the original agenda. Again, the Attorney General, I think, cautions public bodies to say, you know, if, if there are items like that, think about postponing discussion, if you can. You're not going to be technically in violation. If there's any action to be taken, like a decision, certainly try to postpone those kinds of things, decisions, based on something that just has been brought up in a meeting.
Sure.
So, it's, it's really kind of a, a rule, it's like a reasonable rule, right, that, that I think everybody can understand. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's not fatal to, to, to have a discussion about an item that is prompted, as long as the chair didn't reasonably anticipate it in preparing the agenda, the original agenda, you know, more than 48 hours in advance of the meeting.
They can never read my mind. Sorry.
So, I'm, and I'll go, come to you in just a second. So, I'm hearing that when we're asking questions to the mayor, to the schools, we're okay to, if, if we just ask a question that comes up from that discussion, even if it hasn't been put on the agenda ahead of time?
Well, that's right. I mean, I think there was a question to the mayor, I mean, I think today, under item 6A, questions from the council for the mayor, at the time of posting, there were no questions reasonably anticipated by the chair. And then there were some questions that were posed to the mayor that she addressed in terms of the budget. So, I, again, that's something that I'm sure you, President Wondolowski, because you're the, you're the standard here, didn't anticipate that question from a specific counselor. And so, again, not a technical violation of the open meeting law.
Counselor Gullum.
So, I, I appreciate and understand and feel settled by that your response that's saying that Chair Wondolowski could, President Wondolowski could not have reasonably anticipated, and we weren't in violation. And I'm still curious about good practice, because we have maintained, we have maintained as a council that we have the right and responsibility, and, and I appreciate you saying that we, we do have that ability, to ask the questions that emerge in the moment. And my intent with sending the questions to the superintendent and the mayor was, was to give them a heads up that I'd be asking those questions. And I am ambivalent, I mean, actually not completely. I would like those to be posted so that the public could read along and see the questions. But if it is in violation of the law for them to be posted, or for me to share them in anticipation, I don't have to give them the heads up, and I, you know, I could just ask them spontaneously. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what is good practice. I'm wondering, should I have sent the, I mean, I could have just sent them to the superintendent and mayor and not share them with President Wondolowski and the chair, or should I have sent them, like, what, or is, or does the law have any, like, is there any guidance? And if there's not, I'm also okay with that. But I, I just want to be clear, I was trying to give them a heads up and trying to allow the public to know what those questions were, but I don't, I don't have to send them in in the future.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's, it can be very challenging, because as a counselor, I'm sure you're bombarded, and you're, you're thinking about what was been said at certain meetings, and then all of a sudden, there's an epiphany, and you want to ask some information. I, I think the rule of thumb is, you always strive to comply with the open meeting law, the spirit of the open meeting law, which is, hopefully, you're able to frame your questions and develop those questions that you want answered at a public meeting well in advance, so that you don't even create an issue such as this one. Sometimes that's impossible, you know? I mean, people are busy, it, it happens. So, as soon as you have this idea, these questions you like to ask of a, of a, at a meeting, you should try to, you know, you can still, it's still good to put the questions down, as you did, send it to the as you did, send it to the president. I know it was the day before, the night before, but she sent these questions on, and they were added to the agenda, wasn't a violation of the open meeting law. I mean, it, it, I understand from the, the hearing, the March 19th hearing, that were some concerns about being able to address these items, because people thought that, some counselors thought they didn't have enough time, and, and that's, we understand that. So all you can do is try to get the information out, or the topics out, to the chair as quickly as you can, once you are aware of the questions you want asked. And in this case, you know, you try to give as much advance notice as possible.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm not sure if there's a motion that needs to be made, sort of allow me to, authorize me to respond by?
Motion later, on the agenda.
Oh, okay. And it's posted? And it's posted, great, that's, okay. I don't want to be, I don't want to come back here, you know, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're almost to public comment, so. So next we have Carol Collins from the Energy Department, so, thank you for coming.
Look at how many people came to hear me talk.
So we thought, since it's Earth Day month, that it would be good timing to hear what you all are up to.
Great, thank you. It's too warm in here, first of all. Thank you for the invite, and it's good to see you all. And tell me if this is too loud, because it feels very loud. It's okay? Okay. So I'm going to start off with good news, which is not how I spend my days, but there is a lot of good news to share, and, and a lot of this is also in the budget book under the Energy Department narrative. I try to kind of use it as a year-end report kind of thing. But overall, throughout the municipality, we are now saving 28% off of what we were using across buildings and vehicles when we started as a green community back in 2010. So that is a massive accomplishment, and it's been the effort of, of a lot of collaborations and people working together and never stopping. So that's what we do. And we're in a great place where people are on board and things happen, that should. The other thing that I'm wicked excited about is that we now have the numbers on the DPW office building, and you may remember that we were very fortunate that a generous resident gifted us a solar array for the rooftop on the DPW office building, which was already built to be net zero already. It's extremely energy efficient, it's all electric. So through his gift, we sized an array that should have met the needs of the building for a year. That's what net zero is all about. And yay, we did, we actually are what's considered net positive, because there's been more electricity generated than the building used in, in the calendar year of 2024. And then a little surprise is that we also get a check every month as part of the smart solar market program, and so we've generated over $1,000 in income also. And we're now getting a new EV that we're going to have a charging station at the building, which all is going to be free. So if I can say anything, I just want to say that the office building is roughly about the same amount of usage as a home, and it's very easy to do this, and I know everyone thinks they can't afford it, but there are, there's a fabulous solar loan program, the state is, is great at providing the support so that people can do this, and it's a heck of a lot easier than doing bigger, bigger projects, but I'm happy to talk to anyone about how you can pretty much put no money down and get off of fossil fuels for your home with a lot of work, or depending on where you're at, with your house. It can be done. And it may be easier than you think. So another thing is, I just wanted to say that, well, there's a bunch of things. Well, one thing that I think is good to highlight, you know, I think you're all familiar with Greenfield Light Power, where we've been providing 100% green electricity as an option for every electricity customer in the city since, whatever, 11 years from before now, 2014, I guess? And to date, we have saved collectively close to $7 million over whatever sources rates were for 100% green electricity. So those are the kinds of wins that I am really excited about, because everything I do, I'm trying to save money, and it's easy to go green if you have an unlimited checkbook. Obviously, we don't, which is the real reason I know everybody's here, not because of me. But, you know, every time that we're able to save money, it's long-term, and it makes the city better, and we're getting off of fossil fuels while saving money. So that's, I guess, what you call the win-win-win kind of stuff, and I'm going to keep trying to do it. So I will, we did just apply for a Green Communities grant, and we'll hear about that in July, and so that's kind of taking our next steps towards finding the projects where it makes the most sense to invest some money, and then seeing where we can get that money from, and make it happen, and have a big impact, again, with an eye toward saving energy and, and money long-term, and saving the city on having to maintain properties and equipment, which is a big expense also. So, I mean, I guess the one thing I do want to mention is, and I'm sure you have questions, so I'll stop soon for those, but I would say that there's been a shift, and I was trying to think of, just since I started this job in 2010, we're using a whole vocabulary now, and there's a whole set of the work we're doing. These words didn't exist in 2010. And when I first started going to college back in the 80s, sustainability wasn't even really a term. I was studying environmental science, and solar energy design was what I, you know, because there, there weren't any other terms. So this is a field that's like rapidly changing, there's technologies coming, best practices, and, but I will say that we are seeing more extreme weather events, they're happening more and more frequently, they're having a major impact on not just municipal operations, but on people, and, and homes, and farms, and we've seen enough that it's safe to say this is going to continue to happen. So I would say that what I see looking forward is that we still need to keep doing what we can do that's cost-effective and has a big impact to save energy and to do really cool things, like at the police department, its first EV. I know he's standing back there. So, you know, all these fun things are always happening, and they're fast, and yay, but we also need to keep thinking about how we need to adapt to all these changes. And, you know, one of the things, who would have ever thought we needed cooling centers and, and heating centers? And maybe I just didn't know, and we did, but I, you know, it seems like things are much more critical, that we need to provide so much more support to people, and it has a lot to do with, you know, many different things. But I see the city's role as becoming much more committed to building, to withstand, you know, whatever we're doing, that we're going to withstand extreme weather events that are coming up. And a lot of that, again, it's like hitting a moving target, and things are still, but, but there's enough out there, and there's enough really great examples, that I, I think, enough of you are new and they haven't talked, heard me talk about Fisk Avenue, it was a very small project, but one of the main reasons I wanted to work on it is, we took up a bunch of asphalt in an area that flooded, because there was all this impervious surface in a downtown that's filled with impervious surface. The problem with that is the rain, when it comes, has nowhere to go. We get more and more rain, more and more water with nowhere to go, that's where the flooding comes from. By pulling that parking lot out to the street and planting the grass, we now, you know, took care of mitigating a lot of that stormwater and eliminating that flooding. Tiny, tiny project, just a smidge, but a fabulous outcome. And it was just a matter of thinking like, oh, you know, Marlowe's going to replace that wall there, we have this plan, let's, let's see what we can make happen. So it's just a matter of, and, and so again, we're already doing it when we can, but I, I just wanted to highlight that for the council, and thank you for all your support, and just don't ask me why there isn't more solar. No, go ahead, ready for any questions? This is what happens when it's after seven, sorry.
Counselor Mr. Totoro?
Hi.
Hi.
I was curious if you'd be willing to address the 250%
Yeah.
unexpected electrical use at the fire station.
So, I was hoping nobody would remember that. But it, it does kind of highlight, one thing I, I keep telling people is that when we're building buildings now, it's, they're a lot more complicated. And part of that is because we're creating structures. It's very easy to have a building that uses like, almost no energy. But then you have to, you know, in a fire station, there's so many unique uses, there's, you know, air quality is a really big deal, so there has to be a lot of air movement and stuff. So with that, what I thought immediately, we had a great team, everybody worked really well together, we did everything that is advised to do on a, on a net zero-ready project, it's the same kind of stuff we did with the library. So to see that kind of number was like, something's going on. So everybody's been, the chief keeps calling me up, he's like, I found the culprit! So it's kind of cool, everybody's really, you know, looking at everything, and, and so we are, I, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but I would say that we're, everybody is committed to addressing this issue, and we are pretty certain we've already identified and are on the way to reconciling a couple of the issues which had, had to do with vent fans that were on 24 hours a day instead of being triggered when the CO2 triggered it. And so we also have what's called a verification scope, where we're going to have everything kind of double-checked. The building already gets checked as part of the commissioning process, but this is the second, just again, because of the numbers being like, out of whack, that, that we want to make sure we're not missing anything. So I would say that, even though it was a surprise, that's one of the reasons really good to keep up with what's going on with the energy consumption, so that we can address it in pretty much real time. So I'm hopeful, no wood to knock on, but I, I think within a few months, it should be under control and back to what it should be.
Counselor Garrett?
I was also going to ask about the fire station, but instead I'll just take the opportunity to say thank you, and I know the whole council appreciates the work you're doing, as well as the administration, and you're helping us both achieve our fiscal goals and also our moral obligations to the planet, so, thank you.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Counselor Perry?
Just got to thank you too. I got to say, when that story came out about the fire station, it was like, oh my gosh. But the way it was written, no, no offense, Andrew, but the way it was written, it made it really sound different. And my first reaction was, it's going to be some kind of system problem, or someone didn't know what to do. It's like when you move into a house, you didn't realize there was a secret vent behind the dryer that was to turn on. I knew it was going to be something like that. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are researching it, and looking at it, and trying to figure out what it was. If it's a timing issue, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Well, thank you, and I will just say that, like, we're, we're very fortunate that, again, anybody who works on these buildings, they, they, you know, we all thought the same thing. It's like, okay, we got to figure this out. We know it's not like there's something wrong with the design, all of that was done impeccably, but there's a lot of moving parts, so thank you.
I just have one quick question. First, really exciting that it's, that we've got a EV coming on board, possibly for the meter reader, and was wondering, when we're looking at the three new police cars, if they looked at EVs for those, because we talked about this last year, and I asked for that last year, moving forward?
I know we've discussed it, and I think it's still to be decided, to be determined, and I will say too, I've been watching the market, and there really hasn't been an adequate, they call them PPVs, was that Personal Police Vehicle or something? But there finally is one, and so it's just a matter of, I, I don't want to recommend something that then doesn't work, that doesn't help anybody, so I think we're, we're in a good position, and I, if the chief's still back there, maybe, I think, yeah, we'll discuss it.
Are there grants available for like, fast chargers, or any, anything that we could do to?
That's a much harder question to answer, because a lot of that, those pots of money are, they come and they go, and so I just, with our Green Communities grant, applied for a grant to help offset the cost of the EV for the police department, and to cover the cost of any charger. Yeah, I know, the truck, the Gotcha. Yeah. We misheard that. Apologies, sorry.
I think that's it, thank you so much, we really appreciate it, and all your efforts to save us money and save carbon.
It's fun, we should all try it.
All right, so we're at public comment. We have 26 folks signed up, so this is going to be at least an hour or so. I am so excited that we have such robust public comment tonight, so thank you all for turning out. To reiterate, when you come up, just state your name, address, and if you don't want to give your street address, at least the street you live on, or the Greenfield residence, is helpful to us. And we're just here to listen to you all, you'll have three minutes, so the, don't, I don't want anybody to be nervous, so. Our first person up is Staley, is that Stacy or Staley?
Stacy.
Thank you. Can read your, I figured it was you, but.
Hi, I'm Stacy Sexton, I live at 74 High Street here in town. I'm speaking to you as a private citizen, a resident of the community, not as a school committee member. And I do want to just very quickly, please support the resolution, that is not what my public comments are about, but please support the resolution to make Greenfield a safe city for trans folks. I want to talk about money a little bit. I keep hearing about our financial woes as a community, I hear the resignation to cuts in people's voices, and the meaning is clear, expect less. Fewer services, fewer choices, fewer dollars. I invite a reconsidering of the problems that we're faced with. I say, double down, expect more. Expect more from ourselves and each other, more participation and more forward-thinking. There are ideas for how to feed two birds with one seed. Ideas that can help us solve our shared struggles, and at the same time, lay a solid foundation for weathering the coming political, economic, and as Carol mentioned, actual storms that are facing us. Specific ideas that I'd love to see discussed are creating additional pathways to recruit for municipal careers out of high school. What would it take to get more kids with certifications, like a CDL, or getting paired up with Marlowe and DPW? They're not sexy careers, but they are valued and necessary jobs, that our kids could be encouraged and provided pathways to pursue in a robust and systematic way. We could aim for more, even more ambitious goals, like growing our own paraeducator pathways in partnership with GCC, we could do this with Allied Health, we could do this with Green Careers and Futures Entrepreneurship to boost our downtown, and more. Those are investments, they take money, yes, but they also take the support and the facilitation of all of our community, especially those of us tasked with steering and leading these types of efforts. If we want young people and young families to come and stay here, then we need clear ways to integrate them into the actual running of our community and give them a reason to be here. We have so many talented, dedicated, and hardworking young people, their creativity and persistence are such assets, such strengths to our community, if we allow ourselves to be changed by them. I'm not naive, I see the political and economic landscape, I feel its unsteadiness under my own feet. And, and, there are still opportunities out there, there is hope. Hope is not lost. And, and there are still opportunities out there. There is hope. Hope is not lost, not for our schools and not for our city. I recognize these investments likely won't produce any fruits for five to 10 years, but I also know that these investments could have a tremendous impact on the future of Greenfield far beyond that. I'm looking for bold ideas and big partnerships. I'm looking for some of these ideas to come from other municipal leaders, including other elected officials. I'm calling for more communication between municipal and civic channels. From my vantage point, although I am a private citizen here, I am thinking specifically about the school committee and city council, but I'm also thinking about how we can bring all the other offices together in coordinated ways. It involves a much more public and shared vision of where we're going as a community and what our priorities are, not just for holding tight, but for actually moving forward.
Thank you. Pete Brown.
Start my own timer here. Thank you. I'm Pete Brown. I live at 24 James Street in Greenfield. And I am here yet again to beg you to fund our schools. I understand we're a small city with a lot of financial challenges. I understand that many of those challenges are due to structural issues that are out of our control. I understand that we have even more budget risks due to all the things going on at the federal level. I understand why the school committee seems resigned to budget cuts that mean we can't move the fifth grade back to the elementary schools or move eighth grade back to the middle school. And I understand that our insurance rates are going up and our healthcare costs are going up precipitously. I do not understand why the schools need to shoulder that burden. I feel like that's something that should be spread across all the city departments. I do not understand why some of you on this council seem to think that because we found the money for the schools previously, that somehow ends that question and oh no, why are they back asking for money again? And I don't understand why some of you on the committee seem to think the schools are filled with waste and padding and fraud. In my day job, I work for a fairly large company. It's well understood that if you have a large organization serving lots of people, you need a robust administrative and managerial function to keep that operating smoothly. I feel like I'm pretty reasonable. I try to look at both sides of, all the sides of arguments. I understand where people are coming from. I don't come at things with constant outrage and alarm. But my pleasant demeanor this evening notwithstanding, I am frankly outraged and I'm tired. I feel like absent people like me and probably a lot of other folks in this room coming and yelling at you and begging you and being outraged and asking you to fund our schools, the default is always cut, 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 because otherwise all you're hearing is bad faith arguments about waste and fraud that aren't based on anything. So as a taxpayer and as a resident of Greenfield and as a parent, I will say I don't think there's any department in the city that is more important than our schools. And I am begging you, please figure it out. Find the money. Fund the schools. Unrelated to all of that, I strongly support the sanctuary city resolution. I hope you all vote for it later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Empress Benou. Just turn on the mic so that the audience at home can hear you.
My name is Empress and I'm not here for any of my titles or what I do for this community. I'm here as a mother of an elementary student that goes to Federal Street School. We have an issue in Greenfield Public School System and to be more specific, Federal Street School. There's a situation brewing that I want to bring to the wonderful people of Greenfield. There's a substitute who has been engaging in racial discrimination, hate-filled rhetoric, segregation practices, and bullying to our elementary aged black and brown students. There has been numerous incidents in prior years that many people know about, but until now, they didn't feel supported, so they stayed in the background. I'm here to tell you those days are over. The days of not allowing our black and brown students to utilize the restroom, but allowing white students to, allowing white students to, those days are over. The days of black and brown parents going unheard by the school department, those days are over. The days of my child having to be shamed and embarrassed in front of his white peers by being called a black monkey, I'm here to tell you, that too is over. I'm here not to bring this so much to the council, but to the community at large. The days of segregation and slavery is over and how dare a so-called teacher disregard that fact, but would rather humiliate our students, black, brown, and white students, by forcing her racist garbage on them. But I'm here to tell you, I'm going to fight to ensure her days as a teacher in the state of Massachusetts will soon be over. To the parents of black and brown students in the Greenfield Public School System, who I feel that you felt ignored by the system, I hear you, I feel you, and I understand. The parents of white children who had to explain to their children why people act this ignorant sort of way, I respect you and I thank you for your support in this struggle. To the youth of Greenfield, you are beautiful, you are good enough, you are smart enough, no matter what color you are. I believe in you and I'm fighting for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tucker next. Is there a Tucker?
I'm certainly not going to have as much power as our previous speaker, but add my voice. My name is Tucker and I live in Precinct Eight. And before I read the comment that I have prepared, I want to add my voice in support of education funding because we cannot invest in our community without investing in our teachers and students, all of them. I grew up in Greenfield and after living across the state and halfway across the world, I moved back here because I love living in this city. I'm a gender queer person and I'm using a pseudonym tonight. I'm actually using the name that I almost chose for myself after coming out as trans almost 20 years ago, because it is a dangerous time to be openly identifying as trans. And I wish that I could use my real name, but the reality that I'm living is that to state my full name and address in a meeting whose minutes become part of public record is to invite danger. Trans and gender nonconforming people across the United States are living under continual threat of violence from federal officials, as well as states and individuals who feel emboldened by discriminatory policies and laws. From restricting access to life-saving healthcare for children and adults, to removing protection for individuals from surveillance based only on their gender and sexual orientation, to criminalizing simply identifying as trans, the unconstitutional actions of a few in power have made life in the US fearful for many I love, including myself. In a country founded on the inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, trans people are being denied both equal citizenship and equal humanity. However, actions of affirmation, affirmation of our lives, our equal protection under law, and our very right to exist, taken by states and local governments communicate a different message. Designation of sanctuary cities, safeguards for healthcare access, and local coalitions of support tell us that we are welcome, we are human, and we will be embraced as part of the community. While a resolution is not legally binding, the message of support it carries from me, my beloveds, and many more like us, is invaluable. The message that it sends to those who denigrate us is clear. And it invites the city to continued allyship, such as passing an ordinance that holds legal power against those who wish us harm. I love this city and I want to feel welcome here. This resolution is an important part of being able to proudly say that I am from Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Mahoney.
Hello, Heather Mahoney. I reside off Fairview Street here in Greenfield. I am here to support the resolution for sanctuary city. I am president of Franklin County Pride, and in that role, I have been able to hear from trans and gender nonconforming folks that they feel safe in Greenfield due to Greenfield hosting Franklin County Pride. People that I have spoken to have said that that day makes them feel affirmed and seen. This feeling will be year round if this resolution is passed, rather than relegated to once a year, and will show other towns that Greenfield cares about their neighbors. Thank you.
Max Solomon Fry.
Good evening. My name is Max Solomon Fry. I live off of Federal Street in Greenfield, and this is my first city council meeting. I came to voice my strong support for the resolution to make Greenfield a sanctuary city for transgender people. I moved to Greenfield three months ago, although I've been in the valley for a while. And I was really disappointed and disgusted to see the amount of hate on the public Facebook groups in this city. So I came to this meeting in part because I wanted to see what the people of Greenfield actually look like and what they actually stand for. And I'm really grateful to see the turnout tonight supporting this resolution. In a time where our federal government and our elected officials are making the world unsafe for transgender people, not doing anything is not enough right now. And it feels critical that our local government tells the trans people in Greenfield that they are welcome here and they are appreciated and they are safe. I thank everyone for showing up and I thank you all for your time.
I'm going to take Lev Ben Ezra from Zoomland.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to join via Zoom. My name is Lev Ben Ezra. I live on High Street in Greenfield, Massachusetts, and I wanted to speak today in strong support of this resolution to make Greenfield a sanctuary city for trans and gender nonconforming people. I have been around this area, living and working for decades, but I only moved to Greenfield in 2020. My wife is from here. And when we closed on our house on High Street, before we unlocked our door, the first things that we did were hung our pride flag on the porch and stamped our Black Lives Matter sign into the front yard. Since that time, our pride flag has been ripped down from our porch, not once, not twice, by three different times, and ripped in such a manner that the person had to have climbed up onto our porch, probably stepped up onto the banister in order to actually tear the bracket down. I am a cisgender person, and I recognize that my rights and my livelihood and my existence as a queer person is built on the shoulders and the foundation of trans folks before me, mostly brown and black trans people. And as I look at what so many of my beloveds are facing right now in this world, in this community, in this country, it is essential that our community stands up for them. And for anybody either in the audience at John's on or via Zoom who thinks that this is not about them, I think that it is also critically important for all of us to recognize that we, whoever we are, that we are next. So I believe that it is critically important for us to take every action possible to make every single one of our neighbors safe, because it is all of our neighbors who make our community what it is, who make our community safe for each other, and who just like make us what we are. And just to all of our trans community folks in the audience, thank you for being who you are. Thank you for sharing who you are with us. And I am so sorry that this is where we are.
Thank you. Going to take one more from Zoom, and that's Anna Luafontes.
Hi, my name is Anna Luafontes, and I grew up in Franklin County, and I've been living in Greenfield for a few years. I'm here to ask the city council to take positive action and designate Greenfield as a sanctuary city for transgender people. Unfortunately, we're living in a time where a lot of hate is being directed at trans people. This is making it a dangerous and scary time to be trans. And the thing about hate is that it spreads. People pay attention to what their neighbors and friends are thinking and saying, what is socially acceptable. Passing this resolution puts out a strong message that we aren't on board with that hate. We love our transgender neighbors and we are here to stand up for them. So I hope that you pass this resolution and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next I have Sid St. John.
Hi, I'm Sid St. John. I live on Highland Avenue in Greenfield, and I'm here to talk about the school budget. I'm a bus driver for TravelCuz, which services Greenfield Community Schools. And I just wanted to remind everybody in the council and everyone on the school committee that funding our schools and taking care of our schools doesn't just take care of the burden on the teachers, it also takes care of the burden on everybody working for the school district and all of the parents at home who rely on services provided by the schools. And, you know, I think we should all care about this. I think it's pretty important. I think we want to take care of our neighbors. To that end, also, I think the school committee should really, you know, recognize the gravity of the situation that they're negotiating right now. The questions that are being posed, I don't think they're intended to be accusative. It's really just a matter of like, this is really important stuff and we really need to have our ducks in a row with this. So I just hope that everybody can work on getting those ducks in a row. Also, I learned about the motion for the trans sanctuary while I was out in the parking lot today. And I just can't think of a good reason not to pass it outside of, or anything that's just rooted in ignorance. We're a town that really values being able to get together and talk about things. We're at this meeting. Everybody turned up at this meeting. We work hard to make Greenfield greener. We are always pushing to like, take care of our future and make Greenfield a better place. I don't see why this would even be a question. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nico Scott.
Good evening, good people. Thanks for coming to work tonight. Thanks for coming to work tonight. My name is Nikolai Scott and I'm here to talk about.
Can you just add your address or that you live in Greenfield or we just have to have that for the record?
My relation to the resolution will become clear. Thank you. People ask me, how are you when I arrived here tonight? And the answer is that I'm nervous. I've been nervous all day. And the reason that I'm nervous is that this matters to me. It matters to me greatly as a member of this, as a privileged member of this wonderful trans community. This is not simply a political exercise. It's not a game. It's not a show, as one of your council members joked about as I was signing up to speak here tonight. I'm going to get this out of the way first in order to responsibly move forward. The suicide rate of trans community is the highest of any population at this time in this country. But with supportive family, that rate drops 40%. With the supportive community, it drops even further. It plummets, in fact. Just let that sink in for a second, if you will. I work at the hospital here in town, but I do not represent Bay State Healthcare, although I do have the support of all of my supervisors to come here tonight. I do have the support of all of my supervisors to come here tonight. My colleagues and I have a sacred charge. It is a pleasure to fulfill, and that is to provide exceptional care without prejudice. And that is not easy to do, especially lately, but it is rich in reward. The delight of unity and freedom. I delight in the opportunities in my daily work to choose the principle of unconditional care for all that I encounter. You will be sending a copy of this resolution to eight individuals, one of whom is my boss, Dr. Jody Stack. It will inform Bay State Springfield, Bay State Noble, Bay State Wing, and Bay State Children's Hospital of their policies and care and equity of over 800,000 patients. So what you're doing matters. It's not a game. It's not a joke. It's not a show. And I just really wanted to thank you for joining me in service to this community. Thank you.
Judy Draper.
Hi, I'm... Hi, I'm Judy Draper. I live in Greenfield. I've lived here since 2007, retired here. I've been a teacher in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and in Springdale, Arkansas. And I listened to the school committee try to figure out the budget. Especially a couple of years ago, I remember listening as I was in my kitchen, and there were, it just felt like nickeling and diming and taking everything off the backs of the children. I remember that they decided to do away with the fourth grade band program and to do away with some paraprofessionals that were needed in the schools. And I just despaired. And I don't understand all the way the finances work, but I just urge everybody, I appreciate the way people have gotten together and are trying to talk about the finances and about what's going on and be supportive of the schools, and I hope that the conversations can continue in a vein that is productive. So that's one thing I wanted to say. I really support the schools. I don't understand the finances, but I hope that we don't take it off the backs of the children. We don't rest any, anyway, you get it. So the other thing I wanted to say is that I'm pretty old, and I've been around for a long time. And back in the day when I was coming out as a lesbian and living and realizing that I was a lesbian and combining my family, we were not in the same position that the trans community is now, not by any means, but we did fear that our children could be taken away from us because of our lifestyle. And so in that way, it's similar to what's going on now, and I support our becoming a sanctuary city for trans people, for non-binary gendered people, for families of all kinds. And I'm just overwhelmed by the support that's here tonight for passage of this ordinance. I love this city. I hope to live here forever. I hope to die here. And so let's be all supportive of each other, the schools, the trans people, and all kinds of families. Thank you.
Tristan Greist.
Testing, there we go. Hi, I'm Tristan Greist. I live at 73 Solar Way. Just real quick, who is my councilperson? Are you here? Yes, okay, cool. I was hoping it was you. All right, so thank you for entertaining the idea of a trans sanctuary resolution. I know you have a lot on your plates. Go Greenfield schools. Go clean energy. We live in a solar condo. I can't recommend it more. And our child is in Greenfield Public Schools. I want to talk about why I wrote this sanctuary resolution and handed it off to you guys. The reason I wrote it, it wasn't just for the trans people living in Greenfield, and there are a lot of us, and there are more coming, but it's for all of the trans families in the nation that are currently under siege, and it's quite serious. I didn't do it as a game. I didn't do it to stick it to Trump, although I wish I could. I did it because it's needed. I go to a summer camp in New Hampshire for trans families, parents raising trans kids. My family is completely trans, so we're one of the few that fit that way. Most trans families or trans children are just people like you, but they happen to have a trans child. And right now, those families are scared, and they're running, and we've heard so many horror stories at this camp about what their children go through. In Texas, if you parent a trans child, you can have your child taken away and you can be put in jail. Twenty-five states have outlawed trans-affirming care for trans youth. This matters. Studies show that a trans youth who has, is provided with gender-affirming medical care has a 73% reduction in suicidal ideation. Now, that matters. That's a real number, and that's why we need sanctuary cities, because so many of these trans families are looking for places to come. Now, I don't think Greenfield's going to be inundated with trannies. That's not what I'm saying. But those of us, but those safe communities that are out there, we need to put out that we're here and that we're welcoming and that we're safe. And to be perfectly honest, I'm hoping that if enough cities in Massachusetts pass resolutions like this, we will eventually become a trans sanctuary state. And I think that's what really matters, because we've got to be the island of sanity in this madness for trans people. We're less than 1% of the population, but we're getting all of the hate right now and all of the persecution. And this isn't a show, it's real. There are lives on the line, and there are trans families who are currently trying to move and are simply looking for a safe town, and Greenfield is a wonderful town. It would be a wonderful town for them. My child is gender nonconforming. They're having a wonderful time in the public school. Their teachers and their friends and the administration are all 100% supportive. And that's just one thing I could talk about, about why Greenfield is great. So thank you for your support.
I'm going to move to our online. So I have Molly Merritt from Zoom.
Hi, Molly Merritt. I live at Solar Way in Greenfield. I am here to speak in favor of the resolution for transgender and non-binary folks. I hope that it will get passed tonight and then go on to become an ordinance for all the reasons why so many folks have so eloquently spoken about already. I'm asking all the council members to please vote in favor of this, even if you don't like resolutions. This is obviously really important and really meaningful. So this is really the least we can do to support our trans community, who, as so many of you have spoken to, are really under attack right now. I'm also here to ask that we provide level service funding for the Greenfield Public Schools. I'm a Greenfield parent. I hope to send my child to the schools. I agree that the schools can't bear the burden of the budget shortfall, and we need to figure out how, to give them everything that they need to support our students, our teachers, our families. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have Mark Maloney. Mark, are you still online? You can unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me now?
Yep. Yes. Oh, now we can't. Nope.
How about now? All right. My name's Mark Maloney. I live at 239 Green River Road, and I'm actually here with my employee hat on. I work with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, and just wanted you all to know that I'm here in attendance to be available to answer any questions that you might have as you consider the approval to amendments to the FERCOT charter. I recognize that Mayor DeSorger is there, who sits on our council, which is the equivalent of a board of directors, and would likely be able to answer any questions that you might have, but did want you to know that the FERCOT did have people here to answer any questions as well. And this seemed like the most seamless way to let you all know that I was here. So that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I have Taryn Rayner.
Hi, I'm Taryn Rayner. I live in Greenfield. People have said really beautiful things in support of level funding for the schools and the trans sanctuary resolution, so I won't take up a ton of your time repeating things you've already heard, but I full-throatedly support what I've heard tonight, and just wanted to add, as someone who's been teaching English to immigrants and refugees in the community for the last 15 years, I think that there is a really unfortunate culture war divide that has sprung up around the existence of trans people in this country right now, and people find themselves in a lot of uncomfortable situations, kind of needing to argue for or against just the very existence of trans people and whether or not they should exist. I wanted to put forward that regardless of whether or not Greenfield is a place that can provide medical care to trans and gender nonconforming people, those people will go and seek it elsewhere, and if they have to seek it through illegal channels, they will. If they have to do dangerous things to get it, many of them probably will. I've been teaching trans and gender nonconforming folks from all over the world for a long time, and the stories of what happens to people when they are not granted access to the services that they need are horrifying. People will go to really great lengths, and people in some cases will make themselves really ill or die seeking the services that they need to fully express themselves as humans. And so not providing those services won't make trans people go away. It will just drive them underground into more dangerous situations, and that doesn't just affect them and their families and people who care about them, it affects all of us, because trans people are driving the bus, they're taking care of kids and after-school programs, they work at the hospitals. They are embedded in the very fabric of our community, and so regardless of how you feel about the existence of trans people, not allowing folks to access what they need to fully express themselves as human beings is going to cause really harmful ripple effects throughout our whole community. I just wanted to state that regardless of where you find yourself in the culture war, funding and providing services for trans people is something that's going to benefit all of us, and I hope that Greenfield can be a place that just openly stands in favor of support for all humans, all of us actualizing ourselves. And I think that no matter what your political beliefs, we're all going to benefit from that. So thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Kai.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Kai. I'm a resident of precinct eight. I'm very happy to be here tonight. Thank you all for your work so far, and thank you to everybody in the room for coming out tonight. I wanted to hopefully offer a little bit of perspective if the sort of frustration or the crisis-minded note that some of the people speaking tonight have with them are coming into. I'm one of the few people who can say that I was a trans athlete. I was a trans high school athlete, trans college athlete in the Midwest. I was not very good, but I was on a women's team throughout the rural Midwest and had a lot of very bad things happen, had a lot of very adverse experiences, although a lot of people were very nice. I was prevented from accessing hormones as a teenager, even though I was able to get access to puberty blockers, which arguably saved my life. And I came out in a family with no, I knew no trans people. I had no trans community. I had no gay people in my family, and my family was, at least initially, not very supportive. And so I think that there were a lot of difficult things about the way in which I tried to come into this world and exist in this world, and the things that I see happening now are so catastrophically worse. Any small step that this council can do to address the horrific position that trans people, as a scapegoated minority among many others in this country, are suffering would be not just a great comfort to me, but it would be a nice comfort to me as well. And I live here, so I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrew Randazzo.
Hi, everybody. I'm Andrew Randazzo. I live on Laurel Street in Greenfield, and I'm a cis man, and I identify as queer. And I'm also a forester and ecologist by training. And part of my experience with moving to Greenfield, moved here about three years ago, looking for a job in my field, and it's often difficult to find a community where when you're working in forest ecology, you're often in rural spaces, working in rural spaces. And so it's often difficult to find opportunities where both my family could feel safe and protected, and I can sort of engage in my profession. And that was the amazing thing about coming to Western Massachusetts, was to have both rural space as well as sort of welcome and affirming community. And I brought some of my Laurel Street family. You better raise your hand, all of you. That wasn't, I can't even see it. Raise your hand. And we all came to share that message and to support the passing of the sanctuary city resolution, because our queer family on Laurel Street is growing, and around all of our neighborhood, we have this incredible opportunity to make sure that people feel safe and affirmed by engaging in a really simple action. And I hope that we can think about this as a meaningful first step as opposed to an actual problem solved. And so we should continue to, we should pass this resolution, then continue to think about how we can grow our community in a way that makes all people feel safe and affirmed. And it sounds like there's, you know, lots of great ideas and lots of people who would benefit from a continued conversation around how to grow Greenfield as a welcome and affirming place.
Thank you. Max Webb. Max Webb.
Is this on? No, it's on. Great. Hi. The reason I'm here today is because there's a threat to trans rights in this country.
Can you just name?
My name is Max and I live in Precinct 9.
Thank you.
So there's a threat to trans rights in this country. In the big picture, this means there's a threat to trans, or to human rights. I'm a trans person from Texas, and I'm a childcare provider and someone who cares about community and social justice. I know what it's like to have to jump through hoops to be myself. And while there aren't as many in Greenfield, they still do exist. In January, I made an appointment to update my gender marker on my license. I changed it from X back to F for female to match my birth certificate, passport, and legal documents. My suspicions to act were proven correct when I learned that conservative states are using mismatching gender markers in photos to dehumanize and subsequently question the citizenship of said persons. I don't need to tell you how this ends. I was unaware I would also have to update my picture when I updated my gender marker, which now shows me with facial hair. I have had many heated debates with friends on whether it is safe for me to have facial hair in my legal ID. I have chosen not to legally change my name because I fear it will complicate my rights and flag me as a target, as we have seen happen to so many folks already. As a trans Texas native, I fear that I won't ever really be able to escape surveillance. That means I have to out myself multiple times a week. When I use my debit card, when I go to the doctor, when I pick up my prescriptions, the list doesn't end. I come to you knowing that my community needs more protections despite the protections Massachusetts already provides us. If we were to rely on the judicial system to check the executive, I want as many roadblocks as possible. And I want protections from my doctor who prescribes my affirming care, parents who invest in their child's gender-affirming care, medical or not, and teachers who support their children. Related, I urge you to consider threats to education budget in the coming years. When funding gets withheld because you hopefully choose to support trans kids or defend migrant communities in the district from ICE, I can't imagine why you would ever think to be cutting education at a time like this. Thank you. I support this as a resolution to move forward as an ordinance.
Thank you. Mel Goodwin.
Mel Goodwin, Precinct 9, Greenfield. So I just came for two reasons. There were two things. But first, just thank you so much. The time that each of you gives is truly amazing, and I wanted to thank you for that. Just listening to the meetings, all of them, takes a lot of time. And I get to empty my dishwasher while I'm doing it. So again, I want to really thank you because the commitment to time, and I had no idea how much time things would take. But many of you don't know me. I was a math teacher for many years, and I'm also an Army brat. Numbers were always something that were important to me. So when I look at $5 million in accounts over three years and things have been cut in our schools, I cried. Things got cut in the past three years when we had the money to fund them. Every other department gives leftover money, remaining money, back to the city where it earns interest. So I'm giving you homework. This is an MCAS question. If we had taken the money that has been in those accounts for the last three years and earned interest on that money, we would have made a lot of money that could have funded a lot of things for children. Second, I'm concerned about our school budget. Again, requesting money for transportation when we're transporting children in Athol, Pittsfield, other cities and towns. My tax money subsidizing other towns' transportation is a concern, and I'm hoping that's something you're going to look at. There's over $1 million in a revolving account for transportation. In my 40 years as an educator, I've never seen a revolving account for transportation. Special Ed, yes. So I'm concerned about that. And I plead on behalf of every teacher, child, family. We have to bring the schools and the city together. It has got to stop where it's one against the other. And other cities have had this problem. And I can tell you, I've worked in some of those cities, and the number one way to bring people together is to have the same finance director responsible for the schools and the city. It's not your money and our money. It's the city's money. And I think that needs to happen. There have been efforts to do some outside-of-the-box thinking, but without bringing people together, it's always going to be they're hiding this, you're taking this. It's always going to be a negative experience. For the children, I hope you will come together.
Thank you. Pam Goodwin.
Good evening, as always. I thank you for all your hard work. Would not want to sit in your shoes, although I have, people ask me, wouldn't I do it? I'm like, uh, no.
Did we get your name and address?
Sorry. 54 High Street, Pamela Goodwin. I wish I had more than three minutes. I want to say I'm especially grateful that Attorney Gordon explained the open meeting law. I am so sick and tired of us talking about this, of us paying money to this attorney for the explanation. I've even asked somebody out there to get me a copy of what you got from the Attorney General's office. So hopefully, it will go to bed. If we have to put it on every sheet at the beginning of every agenda on the website to explain to the citizens, then let's do it. Secondly, I want to talk about the school, and I might have sent this on, I don't, I hate emails, I'm always in my inbox, but I want to quote a couple of things about budgeting for the school from Doug Swellin, who sat in front of the school board much more than I did as a former educator. He says, "This is not just about resources." I'm paraphrasing. He says, let me get down to where he says, "Until districts across the state join together to demand a functional educational funding plan for the state, we will continue to twist ourselves into knots to do the impossible." That is what I think we're doing wrong, other than I agree totally with what Melody Goodwin just said, and I'm not related to her, by the way. I also want to address the resolution. I have spent a whole lot of time looking on community TV. And originally, I was going, another revolution. It blew us apart when we had to do one for Gaza and the Middle East. So I'm not opposed to it. I have a lot of friends who are gay, lesbian, queer. I never know whether, queer used to be the inappropriate word, but now it's politically correct. So this blows my mind because I'm 77. So I'm not opposed to it. And if you do need an ordinance, then go ahead and make it an ordinance. However, I am hated because I am a Christian. And I'm probably hated because I refuse to say what my pronouns are. And I retain that right as my freedom of speech. I don't care. I don't care what you call me. And she/her is fine, but I'm not going to do that. So that makes people uncomfortable. I'm also struck, I'm hated because I have a Kennedy bumper sticker, by the way. And I'm hated because we have Trump now for the president, and he had to support that so that he could make us healthier in America for the Maha campaign. I'm struck by how many people tonight did not want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We've always had a few, but this was like three-quarters of the group that refused to pledge our American flag. And I bet that's because of, it's a blue state and we have a Republican president. I hate that there's hate everywhere. That's what I want. I want signs that says there is no place for hate. The Route 2 standouts, all of the stuff that's going on, we have to start loving one another. And I'm sorry, I'm going to apologize, that's a Christian attitude. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam. Sarah Duquette. Meh, I can't read your handwriting.
That was a little scribble at the end.
Okay. On purpose.
Yeah. I was looking for Precinct 4. You are Precinct 4. Yeah. Hello. You weren't paying attention, but now you are. Because you're, I'm in your precinct. My name is Sarah. I'm in Precinct 4. And for 48 and a half years, I called myself a Rhode Islander. You'll be able to pick up my Rhode Island accent, no doubt, in the next couple of minutes. So you might think there's a lot of similarities between Rhode Island and Massachusetts. Other than the beach landscape, I would agree. Rhode Island is a fantastic state. The core of Rhode Island was not enough to penetrate the community that my family lived in. We had, I'm here to support the sanctuary for transgender city. We had enough actions and words that I cannot physically speak, but was that heart-wrenching, drop-to-your-knees pain that occurred in our, in our community. But we also had our fire chief, who was our Sensei Dave at our local dojo. And we had our Mr. G, our principal at Hope Valley, who showed us the strength of when some people in the community step up. And that was life-saving. And my family sought more Sensei Daves and Mr. Gs. So I'm an optimist. I live on Hope, and I'm really stubborn. So I Googled. And whether my family ended up in Seattle, Washington, or Western Mass, we were going to do it. So for two years, about three days a week, we stayed in short-term rentals, hotels, Airbnbs in Holyoke, Amherst, Sunderland, East Hampton, North Hampton, Greenfield. I really like the Hampton in here. It's my favorite. I remember driving downtown in the winter to Shea Theater. I took the back roads, and I saw your lights, and I thought, I could live here. I started Googling. You have 80% passage for transgender bathrooms. Like, okay, I could live here. We went to your June 2023 Pride. I saw preschoolers marching with smiles. I couldn't keep up with the banks of which one should I choose because they were all marching. We purchased our home in February of 2024 on Silver Street. Unfortunately, probably the worst neighbors to pick beside us, but I didn't know that. Not a good choice. If you saw my family on Main, you did see my family on Main Street this fall and this summer, in and out of bookshops and antiques, a lot of antiques and ice cream. That change of the past couple of months, there's back to standing inside more. They have hesitancy. And I, I'm the one with the hope, and I need them to have the hope. You guys are giving me the hope with seeing this, and that's why I'm here today. So I have three asks, just three. I ask to pass this. I left my spouse, I left my mom, who needs me for her health. I don't know how much longer she'll live. She was crying today at a healthcare appointment. I'm not there with her. I, we gave up a lot to choose you guys. So we ask for you to pass this. Hang your pride flags as an ally and be a Sensei Dave or a Mr. G.
Thank you. I'm going to move to online for a little bit. So I have Laura Castano. So Laura, if you're out there, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. You're seeing a different name on the screen because I'm zooming from a family member's house. I'm here, I'm speaking up.
Did I get your name and address, please?
Oh, Laura Castano. I'm on Mill Street in Greenfield. I want to speak in support of the resolution of Greenfield becoming a sanctuary city. As we all know, there is a palpable sense of fear among our nation's trans population right now, emboldened by hateful rhetoric coming from the current administration. Our, our trans brethren across the country are being stripped of civil rights and the right to life-affirming healthcare. This is wrong. History has shown us what can come of the othering of minorities, being it for who they inherently are, the religion they choose to follow, or the color of their skin. It's frightening. Standing up for and supporting the rights of all is the right thing to do. It's the kind of good trouble, as espoused by the great, late John Lewis. When we welcome everyone equally, we build stronger, more vital communities. I stand in support of the resolution. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Wendy Goodman. Wendy, are you there? There you are.
Yep, I'm here. Just listening further away from the computer. Wendy Goodman, I live on, in Precinct 9. I want to start off, why don't like looking at me? How do I change this so that I'm looking at all you? I want to thank you all, as always, but I'm so moved by what people have been saying. And I just really want to acknowledge that. There is such wisdom in this community and such heart that makes me really proud to be here. Wait, I'm figuring out how not to look at this. Well, that's better, I guess. I'm not going to look at it. What I want to, I was really pleased to feel a sense of collaboration with the school committee and the superintendent and the city, that it's moving towards that. I think that's what we need to move to. What I wanted, I'm not going to talk pro or con anything here, other than pro our community. And I think that our community and the world, quite frankly, is in crisis. But what does crisis mean? The Chinese write it. The way they write things is like if they have a tree, they have a glyph for a tree, and then they put three, three trees together, and that means forest. And the way they write crisis is danger and hidden opportunity. And the opportunity in all of this, what feels like danger is things are changing underneath us, and we don't know how. And things are unstable. And I think of the immigrants who have chosen to live in an unstable reality because they're, they're working to live their dreams. So maybe we can take a, a note of lesson from people that have been willing to sacrifice stability to realize their dream. And that's what we're in. We're not stable. We can't continue to do things the way we've always done them. And the invitation in that is to really look and see, who are we and how else can we function? How else can we achieve the things that our values are calling us to achieve? And you've heard, everyone that's spoken tonight has spoken for that. Whether or not it's actually the budget, or whether or not there are ways that we can achieve what we need to achieve in other ways, I think we're being called to think out of the box more and more. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, acknowledge the council, which is really awkward because I can't see anybody other than, than the screen. I don't like this. But to really, and to acknowledge this community of folks that stood up. And if we are going to start really acknowledging who we are, then it is a no-brainer to pass sanctuaries so that people can live their human rights. That's what we're talking about. So I, I trust you. I thank you. And that's all I have to say. Now I can go back to seeing all of you. Thank you so much for your service. There you are.
Next, I have David Mosca Tarolo.
Hello. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's David Moscaro Tarolo, 43 Country Club Road, Greenfield. I'm speaking as a resident, and I'm also speaking as the chair of the Public Safety Commission. I'm not speaking for other public safety commissioners, just myself as a public safety commissioner. And I want to say that this And I want to say that this resolution is very important to my wife Amy and I. And I encourage that it pass. As a public safety commissioner in Greenfield, the word hate is a very scary word, and it should not be accepted in our community. And fear is something that nobody should live with in our community. And as a public safety commissioner, I am dedicated to the safety of transgender people and all people that live in Green, the Greenfield community. And that's all I'd had to say. Thank you.
Melissa Toran.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay. Great, thank you. My name is Melissa. I live on Orchard Street in Greenfield. I'd like to first thank everybody who has spoken so far tonight and the City Council for all their hard work and dedication. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my strong support for the resolution to make Greenfield a sanctuary city for trans and gender nonconforming people. In this current administration, which we all know is targeting the trans community, it is crucial to the success and safety of all of the citizens of Greenfield that our most vulnerable constituents are protected. This also sets a positive, positive precedent for other towns to follow in order to create resolutions that ideally move on to ordinances to protect trans and gender nonconforming folks in their communities as well. I'd also like to voice my support for fully funding our schools. Our children deserve our unwavering commitment to their future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Besuit.
Hi. I, I just wanted to say that I've been.
Get your name and address real quick.
My name is Johnny Besut, and my address is 50 Orchard Street in Greenfield. I have been a resident of Greenfield for five years now, and I love it here because of the groups, the business, the businesses and the people that make me feel seen, heard, and supported, and for creating a sense of belonging and community that I haven't felt in other places in the Pioneer Valley. And I've been here for twenty years. And I want all people to feel this. So please, please support the making Greenfield a sanctuary city into an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Weida-Gartner.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, amazing. Hi, Kirsten Weida-Gartner from Riddell Street in Greenfield. Thank you all so much. Basically, I kinda have a mild problem in the sense that I watch almost all of your meetings, and I do genuinely know, and I don't just mean the City Council meetings, I mean the subcommittees. Like, I, I get it. You guys are putting in the work and basically volunteering for that. So I genuinely appreciate you guys. I wasn't here. I didn't sign up to speak about these, this resolution to protect trans and non-gender conforming people in our city. But, and, and I am on board with it in general, like a hundred percent. But that's not why I wanted to sign up for public comment. But, oh my God. How could you not vote in favor of this? And I recognize that it might seem performative, but at this point in time, we have to do something. Stand up. Go for it. What's the harm? The harm, in my mind, or what might be in the back of your minds is, or in the back of Jenny's mind, is, is that gonna put a target on our back as a city that might be trying to go for a grant? And then this resolution is somehow gonna harm us? I, I don't care. Go for it. Like, I don't care. I, of course, we want the grants. We deserve the grants. But we have to stand up, do something. Go for it. Please, please, pass that. The, hmm. The reason that I was here, or that I signed up, is just to ask for some kind of explanation about this settlement regarding the free cash transfer. Just like, talk about it a little bit. Like, I think it's BS on some level. I think somebody is spacing us because it's gonna cost a lot of money to fight. I think we would win if we fought, but I get that it's gonna cost some money to do it. But I just want you guys to acknowledge that the city wasn't in the wrong. The city was following state law at the time that that property was taken. So. And then also, if, do I still have some time left? I hope I do. I, I'm just gonna say, I concur. City, schools, everybody's gotta get on the same page. You're all a part of the same thing. Get together. Counselor Golub, keep watching, start watching the meetings. It's not complicated. The, the, the way that the schools do stuff, well, it is complicated, but if you watch and you learn, you learn about the way that they do it. So everybody needs to just get on the same page about the way everything works. And I think that will benefit everybody. So that's all I have to say. Thank you again for everything you do.
Morgan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Morgan. I work on Main Street in Greenfield. And I'm coming here in support of the immense amount of trans and gender expansive folks, adults, children. If you want to talk about education, you want to talk about supporting schools, then you need to talk about all of the folks who are there. And this ordinance is, is, it's not performative. It actually means a whole lot. As a trans person who works and spends more time at work, right? We all spend more time at work than we do with our families at home. It matters that I'm safe when I go to the doctor, when I go grocery shopping, when I get my car fixed. It matters when I need to disclose something to a banker. It matters when I'm walking around downtown Main Street, whether or not I feel safe to go up to someone and say, hey, I need help. But also, I need to disclose my identity. It means that I can move freely, and it means that the people who are there can move freely. I think that when we consider it to be performative, we don't actually consider how many trans and gender expansive people live and work in Greenfield. It's huge. I don't have a number for you. What I can tell you is that I work there, and I work with a large amount of trans folks and gender expansive folks. And we're there because we feel safe. And folks have left when they don't feel safe. And if we are wanting to build this community, if we are wanting to say truly that folks do belong here, it's not because we want others to be forced to like us or to feel that they are being made to do anything other than give us the exact same right and dignity that they already have. We are not asking for anything more other than the same rights and dignity. I represent, well, I work in healthcare. I'm not here to represent that entity. I run an org, I help run an organization that supports trans and gender expansive youth and their families who live in Greenfield and the greater Franklin County and Pioneer Valley area. But they need to leave Greenfield sometimes to get care elsewhere because they can't find where they feel safe. And this ordinance makes that possible. This ordinance allows folks to stay and spend their money in your city and keep their dollars in your city so that they can fund the things that you are here to talk about consistently. But if we do not make it a sanctuary city, if we do not make it a safe place for folks to go, to receive care, to receive services, to purchase the things from our small businesses, then we won't have that money to continue all of the amazing work that you are already doing. So I am very much so in support of this resolution to allow myself and my community and my family, who are scared. We are very, very scared right now because of the country, because of what's going on. And it is not enough to just say that Massachusetts puts protections in there because we know that that's just, hasn't been enough. We know that there's violence anyway. We know that there are problems within our smaller towns and cities. And Greenfield has a really great opportunity here to say, you know what? There might be a grant that we won't get, and we don't want it because it's worth it to make sure that our citizens and the folks who come here every day are safe. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I've got Vex Ursa Nova Sadowski.
Hi. I'm Vex. I live on Park Avenue, and I'm speaking to you as someone who is non-binary, living in Greenfield. I've grown up in Greenfield my entire life. I've lived here since I was a child. Also, want to name that. I went to the public schools here, and I very much support the budget for our, our public schools. I feel like it's really important that folks who, like me, didn't get the support that they needed will be able to, by extending a budget. Also wanted to say, I am also in support of Greenfield becoming a trans sanctuary city. Not only is it important to me, but people that I work with regularly are also in fear. And I wanted to highlight that, especially right now, our Black and Brown trans friends are facing an even greater risk, and it is even scarier for them to come out, to get their groceries, do their laundry. So I urge you folks to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Julie, I can't read your handwriting. Canvas? Okay, not even close in the same.
It's my handwriting. It's fine. Hi, I'm Julie Carew. I'm in Counselor Gordon's precinct. I live on Adams Road in Greenfield. I'm here tonight for two reasons. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed resolution and hopefully subsequent ordinance, making Greenfield a sanctuary city for trans and gender diverse people. I believe in stating something like this is necessary, especially in this current political climate. It just makes sense if we really are a community that values all of its residents and families, for us to put measures in place to help ensure safety and security for those who are vulnerable. This is one way we can and should do that, and speak strongly as to who we are as a community, that, as we say in my faith community, because I am also a Christian, at the Episcopal Church of St. James and Andrew, that all are welcome here, no exceptions. I also support what I have heard tonight in support of the Greenfield Public Schools and supporting what they need to help all of their students thrive. I am hopeful that so many of you are working on this, and also hopeful, and I am begging you, that it will truly be a collaborative effort to figure this out for now and for the future. As a community, we have to value our young people and show them that by prioritizing them, every single one of them. So thank you.
Thank you. Rachel and Micah Roberts. Any mic.
Okay. Is it on? It sounds like it's on. First of all, I just, I'm Rachel, and I live in Greenfield. And I am not mentioning my address because in Greenfield, it is not safe for me yet to mention my address. I am here in support because my son asked me to be here and speak. So first, thank you for your service. Thank you to the other speakers who have spoken tonight in support of the resolution for declaring Greenfield a safe city for transgender and gender diverse persons. I live in Greenfield, and I have lived here for over twenty years. My husband and I grew up in Franklin County, and we returned to Greenfield after years of living elsewhere to raise our family. As a parent of a trans male, many fears for my child's safety have surfaced over the years. As the trans rights have never been secure, it is very clear that trans people are less safe now than they were five years ago. If citizens in this community feel it's time to issue a bold statement that trans people are safe and supported in Greenfield, they have my support. If such a declaration keeps any trans person safer, then I feel it's imperative we support it. There's enough fear and uncertainty elsewhere. In Greenfield, my son began to realize he had the majority of this community's support at a fragile time in his life. He has been able to be his true self here in Greenfield. Even so, he worried about walking down Main Street, holding hands with whoever he wanted, wearing gender-neutral or nonconforming clothing in retail spaces, or even just walking from our home to downtown with a group of friends who may also be nonconforming. That's here in Greenfield. His hometown, the place I chose to raise him. That speaks volumes to me, and it should to everyone in this community, in this room, everywhere. A child, teen, adult, who does not feel truly safe here under the most common of circumstances. Trans people have enough to struggle with, and if we can help make more of them feel safer, know that there is a space, that they can feel less afraid right now, then let's do it. But really, let's step away from fear-based concerns. Let's look at this as the right thing to do. Let's support all of the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Arjuna, Arjuna Greis.
Hi, Arjuna Greis, precinct seven. Before I speak in favor of the ordinance, of the resolution, which will hopefully become an ordinance soon, I would also like to voice my support for fully funding the Greenfield Public Schools. Thinking outside the box, maybe we can have two more police cruisers instead of three, something like that. Anyway. So I just wrote this. First, they came for the socialists. We all know the poem, right? We hear the powerful lesson that we must speak up for any group under attack by a fascist regime, if only to ensure that someone is left to help when they inevitably come for us. As masterful as the poem is, it is missing a stanza. Because next, they came for the trans folks. The iconic black-and-white image of Nazis burning books in 1933 is not random or generic. That pile of texts on fire was the entire library of the Institute of Sexology, an academic foundation devoted to sexological research and the advocacy of gay and trans rights. Fascists, scapegoat groups, who are on the edges of society, those who already face suspicion, misunderstanding, fear, and oppression. Trans folks are once again one of the very first targets. We have an opportunity today, here in Greenfield and all over our state and our country, to write our own poem together. First, we protected the trans people, and we protected the queer people, and we protected the immigrants, and we protected the Black and Brown people. We spoke up together, and we acted together, and our speech and our actions wove a shield of safety for all. Thank you.
So last on our list, I have Rose Skurloff, who's on Zoom. So last on our list, I have Rose Skurloff, who's on Zoom.
Hello.
Nope. Oh, okay. We thought you were going home.
Hi, I'm Rose Skurloff. I live on Linden Avenue in Greenfield. I am a fifth grade math and science teacher at the middle school. And the reason that I keep coming back to the middle school every year, especially as a queer person, is I feel seen, and I feel supported, and I love going to work every single day. And so I am speaking in support of the resolution. And just for folks out in the public, the only indoctrination that is happening in my classroom is teaching math to students against their will. So if you can just find some comfort in that. And then the other thing, I was already planning to speak, Counselor Golub, and just say thank you for being so open to finding a solution and just naming that, like, we don't have the answers right now, and we need to band together to figure it out. That wasn't quite the, like, what I had gleaned from the Ways and Means Committee last night. So to hear that tonight, it just gives me a little bit more hope, that, like, we're not doomed with our budget, and that things might get a little bit brighter. So thank you, and thank you all for your work and time.
So I just want to thank you all for coming here tonight and sharing your stories and feeling safe. So I can't say more than that, because I don't want to get in trouble for open meeting. Was there one more?
There is. Patricia O'Neill, but I don't know where they're from. They're online.
Okay, one last person, Patricia O'Neill.
Hello, I'm Pat O'Neill. I live in Precinct 1, and I also want to speak in support of the resolution to make Greenfield a trans sanctuary city. Just kind of echoing what others have said, that this will have so many, like, unseen, maybe unacknowledged ripple effects, and that passing something like this would just give a lot of people comfort who maybe, it's just going to be impossible to know how much this good will bring. And also that, yeah, we need to be making big moves, even if it does seem risky. That's what the times are calling for now, and I think it's time to be bold. So if that's a bold stance, then we need to take it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, thank you, everybody, for coming. Really appreciate a full house, and we're not even passing the budget tonight, so this is heartfelt, so I'm getting a little verklept up here myself, hearing all your stories. So we see you. We're going to take our break, five minutes, which will probably be 10 minutes. All right, we'll see you back in 10 minutes.
Steve, for the vote.
I'm going to call us back to order, please. So who's for midnight? Midnight?
No.
No? Nobody wants to go to midnight? Okay. All right. Our next order of business is public hearing and second readings. And can I turn that over to Counselor Toronzo? Because he is the money guy.
Oh, God, that's a tall order. No, I'll get there in a second.
Page seven.
Yeah, I'm scrolling. Page seven is still part of the agenda. Hold on. Oh, just, there's first readings.
No, it's probably carrying in first reading.
Right. But why is it not? It says page seven. I'm on page seven.
Is this touchscreen?
No.
Just talk amongst yourselves. Does anybody want to read Roberts' Rules of Order?
I'm not going to read that.
Good, okay.
I'm going to wait for my papers.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got the better copy.
We got it, we got it.
I have the dummy's version.
This is great, because it's just readings. Public hearing in accordance with Homer's Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 16, 2025, at 6:30 PM at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, in Zoom, to receive public input on the following. Transfer $354,000 from free cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation-related tax title taking of real property. FY 2026 capital budget, 15 orders. Here we go. Appropriate $16,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a fully electric vehicle for use by the Department of Public Works for meter reading. Appropriate $300,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of three fully equipped police patrol vehicles. Appropriate $200,000 from capital stabilization for roadwork and repairs. Appropriate $250,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a bucket lift truck. Appropriate $150,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a one-ton truck. Appropriate $90,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a Department of Public Works three-quarter ton highway truck. Appropriate $34,000 from capital stabilization for design engineering services for repair of Maple Brook Culver at 34 Riddell Street. Appropriate $35,000 from capital stabilization for design engineering and permitting services for repair of Colrain Street Bridge. Appropriate $300,000 from capital stabilization for repair and installation of fire alarm panel for the middle school. Appropriate $35,000 for repair of Davis Street tennis courts. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds for $35,000 to inspect Adams Hill water storage tanks. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds for $80,000 to purchase pickup truck. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise to bond for $500,000 for engineering and design services related to dredging Green River water supply intake. Approved Department of Public Works Sewer Enterprise to bond for $200,000 for inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Approved Department of Public Works to accept Chapter 90 funding for $622,758 for roadwork and repairs. City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, April 16, 2025, at 6:30 PM at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom.
Public hearing is now open at 9:20? And can you ask the second, read the second reading?
Lovely, yeah.
Sorry.
Second verse, same as the first. Transfer $354,000 from free cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation-related tax title taking of real property. FY 2026 capital budget, 15 orders. Appropriate $16,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a fully electric vehicle for use by the Department of Public Works for meter reading. Appropriate $300,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of three fully equipped police patrol vehicles. Appropriate $200,000 from capital stabilization for roadwork and repairs. Appropriate $250,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of bucket lift truck. Appropriate $150,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of one-ton truck. Appropriate $90,000 from capital stabilization for purchase of a Department of Public Works three-quarter ton highway truck. Appropriate $34,000 from capital stabilization for design and engineering services for repair of Maple Brook Culver at 34 Riddell Street. Appropriate $35,000 from capital stabilization for design engineering and permitting services for repair of Colrain Street Bridge. Appropriate $300,000 from capital stabilization for repair and installation of fire alarm panel for the middle school. Appropriate $35,000 for repair of Davis Street tennis courts. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds for $35,000 to inspect Adams Hill water storage tanks. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds for $80,000 to purchase pickup truck. Approved Department of Public Works Water Enterprise to bond for $500,000 for engineering and design services related to dredging Green River water supply intake. Approved Department of Public Works Sewer Enterprise to bond for $200,000 for inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Approved Department of Public Works to accept Chapter 90 funding for $622,758 for roadwork and repairs. And yes, I went to Greenfield schools.
Thank you. We don't have any, anyone signed up for public comment? So I will be closing the public hearing right now at 9:22. All right. Next up is the motion about the open meeting violation. Could I ask Counselor Bottomley to read that one, which is on page nine?
Order number fiscal year 25-090, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to authorize Sullivan Hayes &amp; Quinn's LLC to file a response to the open meeting law violation complaint filed against City Council President Laura Wondolowski and Counselor Catherine Golub of the Greenfield City Council and received by the City Clerk's Office on March 24, 2025, from Stephanie Duklos. Majority vote required.
There's a second? Counselor Gordon?
Second, unless somebody else said it.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll move it to a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? The order passes. All right. So next order of business is the safe city for transgender and gender diverse persons. Could I ask Counselor Perry to read that for us? It's on 17.
Order number FY 25-077, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution entitled Resolution Declaring Greenfield a Safe City for Transgender and Gender Diverse Persons. Majority vote required.
Is there a second? Thank you. Counselor Gordon?
Really? Nobody else? I just want to say, this is a really beautiful room full of people who are here tonight, and I thank you so much for being here. And I thank you for being here in this room tonight and online, and I thank you for being here in our community. There's absolutely no reason that we shouldn't do this, and there are a million reasons that we should. My only concern is that it is not really a concern, but it's that it's just a resolution. Just understanding that it means a lot to a lot of people here, so it's really important that we pass it. And then I think it's really important, as a community and a council, that we then make this into an ordinance that has real teeth, so that people have as much protection as possible. As someone said in public comment, you know, everything that's happening to trans people right now is a test of all of us. It is a test of how much, you know, billionaires can divide us and turn us on one another. And I think and I hope that Greenfield is a place that is willing and able to stand up and say, we will not be divided that way. It is all of us or none of us. So thank you for bringing this resolution, and I'm very excited to vote yes on it.
Counselor Perry?
I've been thinking about this, because I have, strange it might sound, I have heard from people who do not support this, you know, privately, you know, and what do you say? There's just some times in our lives that we're called upon, in all aspects of our life, to do the right thing. And human rights is the right thing, you know, and people, we got an email today where someone suggested we wait. Wait for what? Human rights doesn't change with time. And as a Catholic, I hear my community, but human rights has nothing to do with religion. And for my political friends, I know that there's political differences, but human rights is not political. And for some of us on this council, we do have problems with resolutions. It's true. But this is specific to Greenfield, so I don't have a problem with a resolution specific to Greenfield. And so, you know, it's a human rights issue. We're all human. So thanks.
Counselor Golub?
Counselor Garrett had his hand up first. If you want to go first, and then I'll go. No? Okay, I got it on. Okay. Yeah, I was, it's been a really hard time. And I was on the phone with a dear friend a couple of weeks ago, and she said, at least we know how to love each other. And that, and at least we know how to love each other. And the love in this room is a gift, and I'm grateful. I'm really grateful for all of you showing up. And I think that the only argument against this that you may hear is that this is a resolution. And a couple of thoughts about that. The first is, when I received the resolution, I said, yeah, we need to make this an ordinance, and so the ordinance will be coming forward, and we've been working together on it. And the response is, well, why don't you have a resolution and an ordinance? And I was like, obviously. And an argument against resolutions is that they have little teeth. Well, little, there's few teeth. And in a moment in which we have so few tools within our power, I think that we have a responsibility to use all of the tools within our power. And we have a representative democracy. I haven't heard from people, I believe you completely, that you've heard from people who didn't support it, and I thank you for supporting it. In a representative democracy, where our job is to listen to our constituents, and not a single person here has asked us to vote no for it. Many, many, many people have asked us to vote yes. And this is an opportunity, even if this doesn't have the teeth of an ordinance, and what will come forward will have the teeth of an ordinance, but even if this doesn't have the teeth of an ordinance, what we have heard from our constituents is that this is an opportunity, that this is a, that if this gives just one person a sense of care, a sense of comfort, a sense of support, then this is worth it. And that there are institutions within our community, including hospitals, including healthcare providers that are listening. And if the sense of, if the sense of care and support and comfort saves just one life, then I think that this is worth it. Or just makes one person feel good when they go to sleep tonight, I think that this is worth it. And I liked hearing about Sensei Dave and Mr. G. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to be like Sensei Dave and Mr. G. And I hope that all of you will come back next month, maybe it's not, in the next couple of months. It will not be in May, but it'll likely be in June. Could you?
We can't talk about the ordinance now. Thank you.
Well, I hope that people keep showing up. This room is beautiful, and I hope that people keep showing up for whatever reason. So, thank you.
Counselor Garrett?
Just on the note of showing up, there are many council seats that will be open this fall. So if you enjoyed being here for this meeting, you could be sitting up here as well, and we would love to have you. So you've shown some civic engagement and commitment to this, and genuinely, you know, if you go, and Clerk Scott, right over here, can help you out, if you go to the City Clerk's Office, walk in the front doors, I believe it's two doors to the left, and ask for nomination papers. In all seriousness, that would be fabulous, to see some of these faces on this side of the bench. There were many comments that resonated, I think, with all of us sitting up here. The ones around, there was a person who I did not catch the name of, and otherwise I would say it, but they cited the poem, the famous one about the Holocaust. And then someone else also used the words minority scapegoat. And those two particular comments chilled me, for lack of a better phrase, because when we behave, you know, if it was 1933 in Germany and we're bystanders, then we become collaborators. And so that's, again, it's a moral obligation, is a phrase I used about the environment earlier, but it resonates here as well. So I just want to, again, thank the public for showing up, and yeah, now we'll be voting yes.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for showing up, for being there, for being yourselves, being genuine, authentic. I'm really moved. And I knew it would be emotional to hear the stories and still feel it deep in my heart. When my ex-wife and I moved to Greenfield over 20 years ago, we didn't know if we'd be welcomed here. And I've seen- And I've seen, you know, I've had slurpees thrown at me for moving cars, and I've also seen the best, and had neighbors who I never thought would be supportive, be really supportive of our family. So, and that was not our current political climate. So, I think this resolution allows us to be full-throated in support of our community, and that we can say it out loud. And even though, you know, we talk about whether or not a resolution does anything, it does something because it's us saying out loud that we all matter. So, I'm really excited to support this. So, I think we can move for a vote unless, Councillor Bullock?
Yeah, two things, and then a friendly amendment, just because there's a typo. One is that I just want to remind everyone in this council, I've heard a lot of things about feelings about resolutions. We all unanimously supported a resolution about lead paint. So, I don't know how those two equate with making judgments about what resolutions matter. I am obviously fully supporting this. This has been the best public comment in the four years I've been doing this, so I just want to thank you all for staying for a late night. And whoever said the trannies are flocking to Greenfield, you should make a sticker, because you would make a million dollars. And my friendly amendment is that on page 18, it's just the typo is, it says Franklin Country Pride March, and it should be Franklin County Pride March. It happens, it happens. There's autocorrect, I won't catch that.
All right. All in favor of passing the resolution, please say loudly aye.
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 Okay, the resolution passes. That feels good. And now we're going to talk about money. Which is, which is equally important, absolutely. So, now we're at the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the, so I'm going to turn that over to Councillor Gollub.
Excuse me. Order number fiscal year 25-078. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City, Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Ad hoc Greenfields unhoused Community Committee Pamela Goodwin and Zoe Smith, both terms to expire December 31, 2025. Agricultural Commission Sydney St. John term to expire December 31, 2028. Board of Registarians Wanda Pyfrum term to expire December 31, 2028. Public Safety Commission Gary Braff term to expire December 31, 2029. Majority vote required.
Okay. Second?
And there is, there is no recommendation from committee because we did not meet this month. We didn't have a quorum.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, so we can move it to a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next is, oh, I'm getting, I keep getting lost. Approval of amendments to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments Charter, which is on page 24. Is there anybody who could read this?
I can read that.
Thank you.
This is order fiscal year 25-076. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council vote to adopt and enact the amendments to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments parentheses FERCOG Charter. Said amendments have, having been proposed by a two-thirds majority of a weighted vote of the full membership of the FERCOG Council and a majority vote of the FERCOG Executive Committee, with said amendments taking full effect immediately upon adoption by two-thirds of the member towns unless a later effective date is otherwise specified, or take any actions relative thereto. Two-thirds vote required.
Second up. Any discussion? And we do have Mark on Zoom still, if... All right, no questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We're at number five, transfer of free cash. If I could have Councillor Toronzo from page 51.
I'm getting there. It's loading. Order number FY 25-056. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to transfer $354,000 from free cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation related to the tax title taking of real property. Moved that it be ordered that the City Council approves the appropriation of $354,000 from free cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation related to the tax title taking of real property. Majority vote required.
Second? Any questions or discussion?
Set a positive recommendation from committee.
Thank you.
Overall?
Hearing none, we can move, or Councillor Perry?
I'm interested in one constituent who asked a question twice. The question was asked at Ways and Means last night, and it was asked again tonight. So, if anyone wants to give an overview of what we can say about this, so this, the public knows what's going on.
Attorney Quinn, do you feel comfortable?
That's fine, I wasn't sure.
Not it, not it?
Sorry, you can hear me? Okay, so this, this relates to litigation that was filed back in September of 2023. And just to give you the, you know, we talked about this, obviously, in executive session some time ago, but the city had followed, I guess, a practice in the past, like other communities across the Commonwealth, of once they took acquired property through tax foreclosure for failure to pay taxes, they would retain the surplus over the tax amount that was owed by the taxpayer. So, for example, in this particular case, one of the parcels that was taken, the taxpayer owed, let's say, $30,000, but then the city acquired it and then sold it later for like $270,000 and pocketed the difference. And a lot of communities have been doing that over time. The Supreme Court, the United States Supreme Court in 2023 issued a decision saying that that practice was unconstitutional. And, and so, communities should not be doing that. And the consequence of that is when communities did do that, they were exposing themselves to damages, including attorney's fees, because the prevailing plaintiffs could obtain attorney's fees, prejudgment interests, all kinds of damages, okay? And so, in September of 2023, after the Supreme Court case was decided, the one I just described, this action was filed. And there was an attempt during the prior administration to have the case dismissed, and it was not successful. And so, the amount that's, that is being transferred to settle this case, as I've indicated in executive session in the past, is favorable to the city when compared to the potential costs and risks that the city faces if this litigation is not settled on these terms. And so, that's basically where we are. I think a lot of these issues are probably going to be resolved going forward for communities, including Greenfield in the future, because the state last year passed a statute which basically said, cities and towns, you can no longer pocket that surplus under state law. And, and so, communities now are, have to follow that new state law. But at the time this action was filed in September of 2023, that state law wasn't in effect, and people, you know, property owners could sue under the, under the federal constitution, which is what happened in this case. So, that's why we recommended that this settlement be resolved on these terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Toronzo?
I did mention this last night as well, but I'll just say it here. I reluctantly voting for this. I did last night as well, just to put it to bed. I, as one of our constituents online said, I believe that suing somebody for something after the law has changed, when it was, the property was taken before the federal judgment, therefore it was completely 100% legal to do at the time. And the fact that a lawsuit's able to be filed for something that happened before the law was changed is kind of bunk to me. So, I think we would have, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm just going to say it sounds rational to me, if I were a juror on that, that you can't go back for something that was legal to do at the time. And the reason I say that is, not to go way off the rails, but we got a lot of people who were sitting in jail for possessing weed. When weed got legalized, we didn't let them all out. They were in violation of the law at the time. We didn't just open the doors and let them out. And that's what I feel like this is, the same thing, but different, is we're allowing somebody to sue for something that was completely legal at the time. We're taking the settlement, and I get it, this is probably going to be the only case we're ever going to have to deal with this for, because we don't have any other pending out there. We didn't have any other tax titles, is from what I've heard, my understanding from the city. So, that's great. But on a principle level, I'm very much not in favor of this, but on a financial level for the city is the only reason that I, that's the only reason I'm saying this, because we gave a positive unanimous recommendation last night, but I did my fifth vote with high reluctance. I just wanted to say that. So, I, I don't think, hopefully this is not a practice we ever have to go through again, whether it's obviously not on tax title, but any other kind of litigation.
Point of clarification, just for the record, Massachusetts did pardon anyone who was charged with a misdemeanor offense of marijuana after marijuana was legalized in the state.
Point of clarification, they're still sitting in jail. They weren't pardoned, they weren't pardoned.
All right.
Governor Driscoll did pardon someone.
Since it's not on the agenda, I do not want to end up paying, paying our lawyer again. So, we'll let you guys figure that out in private. Can we, can we take a vote on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Okay, this passes. All right, we are on to the capital budget. All right. Councillor Toronzo?
Yay.
Page 53.
It's 25-057, right? Is that the first one?
Yeah.
Okay. Order number 25, FY 25-057. City Council moved, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order appropriate $16,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a fully electric vehicle to be used by the Department of Public Works for meter reading. Moved that it be ordered that the City Council approves the appropriation of $16,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a fully electric vehicle to be used by the Department of Public Works for meter reading. Majority vote required.
Second? What was the recommendation?
Can I spoiler alert you that all of these were unanimous positive recommendations? They came out of capital that way, was sifted down, and, and then after, we went over them in Ways and Means.
Thank you.
Same conclusion.
Any questions, discussion? Councillor Garrett?
If it's possible, Councillor Toronzo, would you mind just explaining the capital budget process and what capital stabilization is for the public? Just, I think it can be kind of confusing, so there's, but if you wouldn't mind doing so.
As far as the process for how we get here?
Yeah, how do we get here?
So, every year, the departments are requested in the fall to submit their capital requests. There's a capital committee that is comprised of the chair of Ways and Means, or designee the, a member of the school committee, and a member of the, why can't I think of it right now? Not Building Department. Construct? Construction and planning? Planning against construction, okay. See, that's like Rex and Park last night. It really messed me up. Parks and Rec. Yeah, so, and then, so, the three folks on that board, advisory board, look over all of the capital requests from all the departments, sift through those, have presentations given by the department heads, and then put in recommendations to the mayor, who then, when we, we get them, we talked about them at Ways and Means, when we get the financial orders given to us, and the ones that I've already read twice tonight, now I'm going to have to read three times. Then we sift through those when they come to the subcommittee and go over those, and we look at the recommendations from the finance director on, in this case, for capital stabilization. There are, we talked about this a little bit, well, quite a bit at Ways and Means last night, as well as other times. What is needed in our capital stabilization funds, on recommendation of the Department of Revenue, to carry healthy bond rating, what we need in there, you know, to cover things that may come up throughout the year that you're not expecting. We've got one that's spoiler alert. We got a new capital request for, of an at the middle school that we're now going to have to take on next week that we weren't expecting. So, taking the balance of what we have in our stabilization and deciding what would be healthy choices to make for that year on departmental needs, from looking at prior years past, looking at what might be coming forward, those recommendations are made, and then, like I said, the mayor submits whichever capital requests she would like, and then we deliberate over them, and then they get to this point. I don't know if that was helpful, but, okay.
All right. I think we're ready to vote on this one, if that's... So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, that order passes. On to the next page.
Order number FY 25-058. City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to appropriate $300,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of three fully equipped police patrol vehicles. Moved that it be ordered that the City Council approves the appropriation of $300,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of three fully equipped police patrol vehicles. Majority vote required.
Second?
Positive unanimous, if you need me to say it every time.
Councillor Gordon?
I just want to say that I do hear the folks who say, you know, "Why can't we put this money to the schools instead of buying police cars?" And I also want to prioritize school funding, like the folks who spoke tonight. And, and this is, I will say to the public, this is where being up here is hard, because there are things that we have control over and things that we don't have control over. And we could vote no on this, but we can't dictate where that money goes after that. And the police need cars, just like the other departments who need vehicles that we're voting on tonight. So, I am going to vote yes on this, and I'm also going to continue to urge the mayor to find more money for our schools, because I think that we should be able to fully fund the needs of all of our departments. of all of our departments.
Counselor Perry.
Just wanted to mention for the public, that the police department vehicle fleet is horrendously out of date. They haven't got a new vehicle in about five years. And the past practice was getting a new vehicle almost every budget year. So it's not as if this is a Christmas gift. It's a need for the police department to keep the fleet on the road safely for the police department and for the citizens. So it's, it's a tough thing to do, but it's a necessary thing to do.
I have a point, I have a question, point of question. Was it last year or the year before that there was a request for vehicles? It was last, and was it not funded?
Last year was funded, because I remember, because I said I don't want to fund any more gas cars.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And I voted for it.
Thank you, I thought that they, there was vehicles last year.
They said they had been passed over for many, many years, and please. It looks like no more comments, so why don't we move to a vote? Oh, Counselor Goleb.
I'm just noting the $300,000 in the next few years for the vehicles, and wondering, I was also wondering about the difference between leasing and purchasing. I know that the requests from the department had been to lease, and the mayor chose to purchase. I was curious about the rationale with that. I don't know if that was something that was discussed at Ways and Means, I wasn't able to see that, so.
Yeah, yeah. It was discussed.
And so, and so this may be a question to Ways and Means members, both the rationale of purchasing versus leasing, and also the plan in future years.
Yeah, no, we did discuss that there. It's, it's something that could be talked about more, once, once the hole is dug out of. It's not really a reasonable thing to do right now to get back up to speed. And we did talk about that, we talked about, you know, we're gonna, they're, they're gonna keep looking into, you know, working with Carol Collins with electric vehicles as they become, and I'm glad that she was here tonight to state that, because I know that that's a concern of a lot of people. The technology is not there yet, and, and I appreciate her being the one to say that, and not just me, that, you know, it could be a really bad investment if we try something when, before it's been tested and true, and then we end up wasting a bunch of money on something. But I think we're going to revisit that down the line, but with the state of, we also had talked about, you know, previously, like last year, and we even brought up this year as well, is some of these things used to be done out of operating on a rolling basis, and, and right now, it didn't seem feasible to carry that burden in operating, like I said, because of the depletion of the fleet as it is right now. So you kind of gotta, I don't know, for lack of a better term, you gotta buck up right now and take care of it in order to get what is necessary to complete the job. That's...
I just want to comment on the technology, because East Hampton has electrical vehicles that they've had for, I think, two years now at least. My electric car is out in the lot. I know my car is not the same as what a police cruiser needs, but there is the technology available. It might not be at the cost we are ready for, but, mayor.
I just wanted to say that one of the three of these is going to be an electric vehicle. We're, I want to do all to know that. We're also, Carol's putting in for a charger there, so one of the three vehicles is going to be electric. And secondly, on the leasing, when the capital committee met, that was one of the members suggested, because they were so far behind, of putting three more into lease. And so I took that out, so that we weren't doing six. But I just wanted to clarify that, that we are trying, one of the first ones is an electric vehicle.
Cool.
Thank you. Counselor Perry.
I just wanted to mention for the public as well, that the police department, you know, did a lot to keep the cars on the road. They worked behind the scenes, they did other things, they got used vehicles for the detective fleet. And so they have been stringing it along, trying to make this work as long as they could. And we're just to a point now where we have to get new vehicles for the safety of the police department and its citizens.
Counselor Bottomley.
I also wanted to point out, this applies to DPW also. In the past, some administrations have not kept up on a schedule of vehicles, and it really comes back to bite us, because then we're dealing with three or six vehicles or multiple trucks in one year. And I think the DPW and the city in general has done an incredible job of serving, servicing these vehicles and keeping them going way past their life and many life that's expected. So it's just a little bit dangerous if we, if we get off those cycles that the department heads set forth, because we'll have to do it at some point, and it's just much more painful when we have to double or triple up.
Counselor Garrett.
So just two thoughts on this. Automobiles are one of those areas where tariffs are particularly likely to increase the cost in the future. So I have concerns about putting off any vehicle purchases, just in general, because of the potential cost. The second piece, we got a lot of emails from folks talking about the cop cars and the school budget in the same kind of breadth. If we voted these police cars down, it would not go into the general fund to be available for the schools, it would go into capital stabilization. So if there's anybody who ends up watching this video later that was still wondering about that, I thought that was important to clarify.
If there aren't, oh, Counselor Toronto.
I just want to say, I'm glad that, that one of them is gonna be electric. There was a little bit, we talked about it a little bit, but it wasn't in the original specs we got, so if that can be in the same price range, that's great. The other part, too, to kind of echo what Counselor Garrett was saying, is there's, the reason for us having funding broken up the way that we do is because not every, you have to have, you know, it is a stability for the city to have capital coming through, no matter what department it is. And, and like we've seen, as Counselor Bottomley was referencing, is in the past, when, when you lose that stabilization, you end up having to eat it later. And that's essentially what we're doing right now, is we're having to pick up the pieces of some past, what I would call misjudgments. And while I understand the simplicity behind the idea of we could just move this money over to the schools for that, it's not, that's not why we have these, these pockets, it's not why we split up money in, across the city in the ways. And so it's, it's not as cut and dried, it's just like, we could just not do this and do this. It's not sustainable in the long term if we don't keep some kind of, I keep using that word, but stability, even though it's in the word stabilization, but that's all.
I think we're ready to vote, so I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this one.
Counselor Goleb.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Master Totoro.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
No.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Vice President Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Toronto.
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
No.
The motion passes by eight votes.
All right, next one.
Order number FY 25059, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 200,000 from capital stabilization for roadwork and repairs. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 200 grand from capital stabilization for roadwork and repairs. Majority vote required.
Second. Looks like no discussion, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. On to bucket lift trucks.
Order number FY 25061, City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 150,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a one-ton truck. What happened to the other one? Oh, sorry, I already scrolled down preemptively, sorry. Order number FY 25060, City Council upon recommendation, Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 250,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a bucket lift truck. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 250,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a bucket lift truck. Majority vote required.
Second. I was thinking about our ladder truck and if we could just use that, but... All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, now to the one-ton truck.
Order number FY 25061, City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 150,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a one-ton truck. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 150,000 from capital stabilization for the purchase of a one-ton truck. Majority vote required.
Second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Passes. And now we're on to the three-quarter truck.
Order number FY 25062, City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate from capital stabilization funds in the amount of $90,000 for the purchase of a Department of Public Works three-quarter ton highway truck. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves appropriation from capital stabilization funds in the amount of 90,000 for the purchase of a Department of Public Works three-quarter ton highway truck. Majority vote required.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Passes. Okay, engineering services.
Order number FY 25063, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 34,000 from capital stabilization for design and engineering services for the repair of Maple Brook Culver at 34 Riddell Street. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 34,000 from capital stabilization for design and engineering services for the repair of Maple Brook Culver at 34 Riddell Street. Majority vote required.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Passes. Okay, Colrain Street Bridge.
Order number FY 25064, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 35,000 from capital stabilization for design, engineering, and permitting services for the repair of Colrain Street Bridge. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 35,000 from capital stabilization for design, engineering, and permitting services for the repair of Colrain Street Bridge. Majority vote required.
Second. Counselor Master Totoro.
Just preemptively, a question.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Opposed? Okay, we, now we're on to the middle school.
Order number FY 25065, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to appropriate 300,000 from capital stabilization for the repair and installation of a fire alarm panel for the middle school. Moved that it be ordered, that the City Council approves the appropriation of 300,000 from capital stabilization for the repair and installation of a fire alarm panel for the middle school. Majority vote required.
Second. All in favor?
Oh wait, I have a question about this, I'm sorry. I didn't hear anything about this in Ways and Means. If there's the potential that we're annexing that building, and we like, we recently sunk $300,000 into that building, is this something that we can't make it through this next school year with what we currently have? Because if that building is no longer gonna be on the city rolls potentially next year, this is just one of those like, long-range issues, that I'm like, if we're looking at everything, why are we, the buyer could sink $300,000 into that in a year.
Did you have your hand up, Counselor Goleb first?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask the same question.
Okay, great, then Counselor Master Totoro.
I'm just guessing here, but this, this is a safety issue. We're talking a fire alarm system with a building full of schoolchildren, and from what I understand, when we talked about this, it's, it's, the panel is outdated and, and it's one of those things that just has to get done. And even if we sold the building at some point, if we didn't use the building, that would probably have to get done before the sale of it anyway, so.
My understanding from the questions that I've already asked is, is that it is, it is functional and it does need to be replaced, but at the moment, like the kids, it is functional. And I say this as a person whose child will be in that building next year. So obviously I care about safety of that building. But I don't know who would know the answer to this question. I did watch all of Ways and Means, and I did not see a specific answer to that.
Counselor Toronto.
When we discussed this at Ways and Means, there was no discussion of getting rid of the middle school at the time, so this didn't come up, which is why you wouldn't have seen any of those questions. I thought the same thing, now that we're being asked about replacing the oven at the middle school, and I think that's around $100,000, it's gonna be looked at. However, I agree with Counselor Master Totoro that this is right now. We don't know what's gonna happen with our school buildings. We don't know what we're gonna end up, I mean, we thought, up until five days ago, that fifth grade and eighth grade were moving, right? So I think it's imperative that we keep our buildings right now up to code, safe, as they're supposed to be used. Like I said, we're looking at asking for another, you know, 100 grand for an oven that, well, yeah, we might not use the school a year or two from now, but we gotta cook meals in the meantime as well. I just, but I just wanted to clarify that this is why we didn't talk about this at Ways and Means, is because there was no talk at the time of ever getting rid of the middle school.
Counselor Goleb.
I think that the question remains, though, for the safety of the next year, does it, will we, will we be out of code? Will we be out of compliance? And will it be unsafe for the next year? I'm, of course, I will make sure, I will fund something to keep the school safe, and if we're not gonna be using it after the next year, and if it's safe and up to code and for the next year, I don't see why we would pass this. I wonder if this is something we, if there's urgency for us to pass it in the next month, or if this is something that could come back in a month from now.
Counselor Perry.
I was gonna, before, before this conversation started, I was gonna say to the public, this is a great example of the universal city, of we all help each other. We're gonna spend this money to help the school system. So now to sit here and say, well, maybe we shouldn't help out the school system, to me is just, it just seems like you're throwing a match on a fire. You know, the school needs to have the fire, doesn't matter what's, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but we know right now that the school asked for this, the school needs this, and we should back the school in this pursuit.
Counselor Toronto, and then Counselor Bullock.
I also just want to point out, this was the only capital request from the schools, and they haven't asked us to reneg on this. We've had that happen in the past, where departments have had a change in, in what they're doing, and then have reneged on their capital request and said, we don't need it anymore. We actually had that, we had that last year, actually, with the schools, where they thought they were gonna need a lot more done for the elevators at Federal Street, and then when they got further information, they downgraded that from, I think it was 3 million, down to like 85,000. That was great. So we were very happy about that one. They haven't asked us to pull out of this one, so this was their request, and when they presented it at Capitol, made it known that it was of some urgency, so.
Counselor Bullock.
I would like to make a motion to table this until May 8th or, or May 21st. I would like to make a motion to table this until May 8th or our May 21st, I think it is, meeting. I would like to speak directly to the superintendent about this and ask specifics. I am obviously-
Can I get a second?
Oh, sorry.
And then you can further discuss it.
Second? I obviously fully support funding our schools to what exactly number this year, I'm not sure. And I think that that means that we have to be prudent in other areas, even though re-appropriating money would take the will of the mayor. To do so, $300,000 is around the amount of money that I believe it would take to level service fund this year's school budget, after conversations with the superintendent. So if, if possible, I would like to hold this. I find it hard to believe work would be done before May 8th or May 21st.
Okay. So May, just to, for clarification, May 8th is gonna be zoning only, so it would be the May 21st, and we'll have to move to a vote for something to be tabled without further discussion, if that's, all right. So do we do a roll call with tabling? When do we roll call this one?
On the motion to table, Counselor Goleb?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Totoro?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion did not obtain a majority vote. The motion is still on the table, still on the floor. Sorry.
Floor of the table.
So I think if, I think we should move to a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion passes. Yes, everybody voted yes. Okay, we're at tennis courts.
Order number FY 25066. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to appropriate from capital stabilization funds in the amount of 35,000 for the repair of Davis Street Tennis Courts, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the appropriation from capital stabilization funds in the amount of $35,000 for the repair of Davis Street Tennis Courts. Majority vote required.
Second?
Counselor Perry?
This was gonna be my protest no vote, but the mayor explained that it's really a safety issue, and we can't have people breaking their ankle out there trying to play tennis or pickleball, so it's something that needs to be done.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't see any abstentions or opposed. It passes. All right, water storage tanks.
Order number FY 25067. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds in the amount of 35,000 to inspect Adams Hill Water Storage Tanks, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds in the amount of 35,000 to inspect Adams Hill Water Storage Tanks. Majority vote required.
Second?
All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
I don't see any abstentions or opposed. Motion passes. All right, another truck for Marlowe.
Order number FY 25068. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds in the amount of 80,000 to purchase pickup truck, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend retained earnings funds in the amount of 80,000 to purchase pickup truck. Majority vote required.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No abstentions, no opposition.
Order number FY 25069. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise to bond for 500,000 for engineering and design services related to dredging the Green River water supply intake, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the Department of Public Works Water Enterprise to bond for $500,000 for engineering and design services relating to dredging the Green River water supply intake. Majority vote required.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Order number FY 25070. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the Department of Public Works Sewer Enterprise to bond for 200,000 for inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the Department of Public Works Sewer Enterprise to bond for 200,000 for inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Majority vote required.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Order number FY 25071. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the Department of Public Works to accept Chapter 90 funding in the amount of $622,758 to be used for roadwork and repairs, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the Department of Public Works to accept Chapter 90 funding in the amount of $622,758 to be used for roadwork and repairs. Majority vote required.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstentions. Right. So presentation of petitions and similar papers, there are none. Reports of committees, nothing. Unfinished business. There is none, but I'm sure there is some. Old business. All right, we're back to Mike for some first readings and under new business.
These are quick, at least. Authorize $1,787, what? That's not right. $1,787.06 for payment of FY 23 electric utility bill from the FY 25 utilities budget. FY 2026 operating budget, appropriate $67,925,100 for the FY 2026 general fund budget, appropriate $2,840,89 for the FY 2026 Water Enterprise Fund, appropriate $3,895,664 for the FY 2026 Sewer Enterprise Fund, appropriate $2,390,826 for the FY 2026 GSET Enterprise Fund. Establish budgets for revolving funds pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half for FY 2026.
That's a thing. All right, next is appointments to the newly formed unhoused community, ad hoc community committee. President Laura Wondolowski of the Greenfield City Council has appointed the following to the newly formed Greenfield Unhoused Community Ad Hoc Committee. Counselor Sarah Brown, who will chair, Reese McGovern, Larry Thomas, and Kristy Allen. The special city council meeting scheduled for Thursday, May 8th, 2025, 6:30 PM at the John Zahn Community Center, Zoom hybrid for all pending zoning amendments. And the last thing on the list is nomination papers, and I'd like to turn that over to Clerk Scott.
Saving the best for last. I know, there's no one here to hear it. Yes. So nomination papers will be available on April 24th. There are going to be open seats, two councillor-at-large seats, a precinct five, precinct six, precinct seven, precinct eight, precinct nine. There's going to be one two-year school committee seat, and then other school committee four-year seats, assessors' seats, trustees of the A.K. Warner Fund, election under the will of Oliver Smith, and trustees of Jenny Albaskam Fund. Papers will be available again on April 24th. You need to be a registered voter in the city of Greenfield to run for office. Please come take out papers. Thank you.
Any motions for reconsideration? I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Good luck.